All right, we're going to get started Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're here for Council Ordinance 23-0381, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. We're here today, we're going to start with Baltimore City Rec and Parks, our BCRP. Merrick Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joined to my left by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Member of the Committee, and to my right, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District. In addition to my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We have representatives from Council President Nick Mosby and Mayor Brandon Scott's office. Director, we'll get right into it in a quick minute. I see we have a number of members of the public who've joined us today. Thank you very much for being with us. We're on Hour 37 of budget hearings, so it's nice to see some members of the community here with us today. As a reminder, public testimony for the ordinance of estimates was already accepted during Baltimore City Council Taxpayers Night on Thursday, May 25th, so we will not be taking public testimony during today's proceedings. If there's additional testimony that members of the public wish to provide, they're welcome to do so via email. If you'd like, please just see Marguerite after the hearing, who's sitting right next to me, and she could provide you information on how to submit written testimony. We'll make sure that gets into the record and is reflected in the bill file. Director, I'm going to turn it over to you in a moment. For those of you who have not been in council chambers since we got this new technology, you will see two buttons. If you notice, the ring at the top of my mic is red. If you click the button on your right, that will light up the button on your dashboard as well as the ring up here. You need that on in order to speak. When you are called on or you're beginning to answer a question, please turn your mic on. When you are done talking, please turn it off. These mics are very sensitive. They'll catch breathing, a sniffle, et cetera. Director, how many slides do you have in your deck today? Probably about 12?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. How much time do you anticipate needing to get through your presentation?
Thirty minutes.
How many? Thirty minutes, okay. I'm going to ask you to try and keep that down to 25 if possible. Director, I'm going to turn it over to you. Before you begin, if you would kindly introduce all the members of your senior team that'll be testifying today, first and last name and position, title, and then kick off the presentation, please, and thank you, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Costello, Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman Porter. Joining me today, to my immediate right, is my Chief of Staff, Jacissa Falcon. Next to Ms. Falcon is our Chief of Capital and Planning, Alan Boorman. Directly behind me is Ken King, Chief Physical Officer. Next to Mr. King is Jenna Green, our Chief for Human Resources. And next to Ms. Green is Jenny Morgan, Legislative Liaison. To my left, in the front row, is Edward Willing, he's my Deputy Director of Parks. Next to Mr. Willing is Ms. Karen Jordan, Deputy Director of Recreation. And to her immediate left is Deputy Director Nicole Green of Administration. Also joined here, we have, directly behind Ms. Jordan, Dan Corr, who's our Chief of Forestry. And then we also have Ashawn Brave, who's our Chief of Special Facilities. With that being said, I will start with a quick overview, and then we will go through our slide presentations, and then be available for any questions that Council may have. As a Rec and Parks Director, I am honored to address the importance of our parks and recreation facilities in shaping the well-being and quality of life in our community. I would like to take this opportunity to present our budgetary plans for the upcoming year, which reflects our commitment to enhance the experiences and opportunities available to our citizens. 2022 was a unique time for us. While we welcomed the return to the post-pandemic operations, we knew the ramp-up to full capacity wasn't going to be easy. We joined others around the nation as we navigated challenges with supply chains and staffing shortages. However, we showed grit and determination. I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to acknowledge the invaluable contributions of our dedicated Recreation and Parks staff. They are the unsung heroes who work tirelessly behind the scenes to bring our Recreation and Parks facilities to life, ensuring that our community enjoys the highest quality experience. Our staff from Forests to Park Maintenance, from Programmers to Center Directors demonstrate an unwavering commitment to the well-being and enjoyment of the Baltimore citizens. They are the ones who mow the lawns, plant the flowers, maintain the trails, organize events, prune trees, cut trees, and ensure that our facilities are safe, clean, and welcome for all. We were grateful to see the full return of some of our annual favorites like the Afram Festival and the Therapeutic Recreation Forum, a prom-themed dance hosted for residents with disabilities and their families, or the Senior Citizen Gala, New Year's Eve Gala, which was a breathtaking event to see seniors of Baltimore looking their best. We are doubling down on our youth by increasing programming offerings, exciting summer camps, and expanding youth employment opportunities. We also managed a few firsts. During the month of September, the agency in conjunction with the Mayor's Office launched the first-ever Charm City Alive. In November, we opened the doors to the Middle Branch Fitness and Wellness Center at Rebird Park in Cherry Hill. This state-of-the-art facility is the city's first super rec, a $23 million complex equipped with amenities allowing the agency to host regional, community events, and much more. Baltimore City was chosen by the philanthropic giant Kaboom as the first official partner of the 25 and 5 Initiative to End Play Space Inequalities, a five-year, $250 million plan aimed to accelerate efforts towards achieving play space equity across the United States. We celebrate the ribbon-cutting of two of our play spaces, Dipski Park and Fallsstaff Playground. The agency also broke ground on three recreational centers, which are the Mary Rodman, James D. Gross, and Chickwell. This shows the administration's commitment to improving our space as we complete Year Three of our five-year strategic plan. REC 2025 is still alive and well. The strategic plan is our roadmap to achieve our long-term goals and objectives, which are Places, People, Parks, and Programs. Again, our four Ps: Places, People, Parks, Programs, and Partners. As a commitment to the agency's staff development, BCRP will continue to promote educational and training opportunities at our local, state, and national level. I am proud to share that over the last three years, BCRP has had 20-plus employees present at the state and national conference. Reflecting on the past six years, I am filled with a profound sense of pride and accomplishment. Much of our work over the last six years has been to establish stability, sustain, and maintain structure. I am truly excited for the future of Baltimore City Rec and Parks. Throughout my tenure, my guiding principle has been to provide prioritized physical responsibilities and sustain growth. And with that, we will start the presentation. The first slide, please. Oh geez.
I got it. technical glitch fixed. If not, if you want to send this to us, and I'll make sure it gets disseminated to the entire council. Great?
Great. So, the first slide speaks about our guiding principles, our vision, which is to build a stronger Baltimore community at a time through conservation, health, and wellness, and social equity. Our mission...
No, I think it's...
Okay. Our mission is to improve the health and wellness of Baltimore through quality recreational programs preserving our parks and natural resources, and promoting fun, active lifestyles for all agencies. So, just, I can continue, Chairman, if you like, as we figure out how to catch up with the slides, but, okay. Our next slide speaks about our highlights. I mentioned several of those during my opening. Year Three of our REC 2025 Plan, truly excited about our commitment and what we're doing from a capital perspective, but excited about the strategy that we're working in conjunction with Kaboom for our playground equity. And with that being said, what we wanted to do quickly is to highlight and share with you all where we are at REC 2025, and so I would turn it over to my Chief of Staff to kind of give us a quick overview of our REC 2025 strategy.
Wait, do we not, we don't have the presentation up?
We have the presentation, but it's a little bit...
All right, can, do we, is Chris Austin here?
I don't know.
Chris Austin. Director, please continue. Chris Austin's on the scene, so this is going to be fixed. It's probably already fixed.
So, Chief of Staff Falcon, if you'll speak about and give an update quickly of our REC 2025 strategy.
All right, good morning. Super excited to be here with our team this morning to give some updates about just the progress of the agency. In 2019, we started this journey to develop REC 2025. At that time, we engaged in a large community engagement effort to make sure that we were hearing not only from our internal staff, but from the community at large. The result of that years-long work was REC 2025, a document that has been guiding and leading our work over the last three years. And I'm here today with my team and the Director to tell you that we are making progress. We set out with four pillars of that plan: our culture, our community, our work, and our spaces. We've kind of made it more simple, just our four Ps: people, places, programs, and partnerships. So, I want to take you first to talk about how we've been treating our people. We understand in Rec and Parks that the people that we work with every day are the lifeblood of what we do. We know that in order for this agency to be the world-class agency we are all aiming for, we have to invest in our people. Over the last three years, this administration in support with the Mayor's Office have been doing just that. One of the things that we know is that people need to have a livable wage. What we learned very early on is that our recreation staff in particular were behind not only the national market, but our local competitors. What that meant for us as an employer is that we were seeing a large turnover in staff, particularly our mid-level staff. In partnership with our colleagues at the Department of Human Resources, we were able to implement this year upgrades for our recreation staff to bring us much closer to being on par with our neighboring jurisdictions. In the same breath, we know that recreation, though it gets a lot of the shine, our Parks Team is just as important. So, we've begun to work to build a career ladder for our Park Maintenance Team, and have recently done some internal alignment to make sure that our park district managers have the salary that's commensurate with their work. Another thing that's important, I think, that makes us unique as an agency is that we have more part-time employees than full-time employees. So, we rely on our part-time employees to deliver services every day. In that regard, we moved our part-timers to $15. So, very excited and proud of the work we've been able to do with salaries for our team, but know that we still have a ways to go. One of the other things that's important for us is that we care for our team. Our teams are in these communities, experiencing violence and all the trauma that comes about being a citizen in Baltimore. So, we're proud that we are the second-largest agency in the city to engage in intensive trauma-informed care work. It is changing the culture of our agency. We are having critical and crucial conversations. Employees are reporting that they feel much more seen, heard, and valued, so we are giving them agency to discuss and have very hard and meaningful conversations, and I'm proud of the work that we're doing in that space. Employee engagement. We also know that this is an employee's market. Employees can get jobs anywhere. So, we, in order to retain talent, we have to make our agency an amazing place to work. We have engaged in launching our employee engagement program, which includes Employee of the Month. And this July, we'll have our first employee gala. We want to come together and take some time to celebrate our successes through the pandemic and long-lasting. We also have been very responsive to our employees, so we've been trying to be very intentional to hear what they're saying. I think no one here is surprised that there has been an uptick in violence in the city of Baltimore. I know we are doing a great job with our partners at BPD to address that, but internally, the staff voiced to us that they did not feel safe, and there are certain things they wanted to change. In response to those staff complaints, we formed an agency-wide Safety Committee, where we meet and we are addressing needs, including additional signage. We've just brought on some support through MS4 Security to lend some additional support to rec centers that are experiencing violence at a higher rate. One of the things that I'm most proud of, I think most of you know, I used to have another job for the city at Human Resources, so people are at heart of what I do, but investing in our people is important. In order for us to be the best agency, we have to commune with our colleagues. I'm proud, and Director Moore mentioned it, but we've had over 20 staff members present at national and local conferences for our colleagues across the case, across the country. And when we go there, Baltimore is received and held up as the gold standard. So, we are doing the work not only in our community, but actually in the profession. So, we have been spending time in making sure that our people like where they work, where their passion is appreciated. So, that's the lifeblood of what we're doing at REC 2025. The next big portion of that is programming. We heard through those community charrettes we did in developing the plan that people wanted to see more robust programming. We are very thankful for a partnership we had with the Family League, and we're able to inject over $1 million into programming. So, we've had dancing, and sewing, and archery, and fencing, and basketball, robotics. The breadth of programming that's offered in our rec centers is mind-blowing, and we're able to do that with the partnership of Family League. Addition to that, I'm not from Baltimore, but I know that Baltimore is a basketball and athletic city, so we've been leaning into expanding our athletic programming. We've recently begun to look into middle school sports, and we're happy to relaunch that basketball program. The return of midnight basketball, I hear of stories of, you know, Madison and the Dome being filled with people, so we're, last summer, we were able to bring that back, and we're excited that this summer will be even bigger and brighter. In addition, we've been doing some really amazing things in the therapeutic community. Bob Signal, who leads our therapeutic recreation division, is awesome. He's a national standard. And this year, we were able to have a swim team in the Special Olympics. And we also understand that we have the benefit of having a lot of local communities and colleges around us. So, we've recently partnered with Loyola University to do a sports camp at Dewise. So, we're leaning into examining our athletic programming to expand beyond basketball to make sure we are touching all sports. Another thing that we heard from the community is the need and desire to relook at how we did special events. Afram is one of our banner events, but what happens and what offerings do we have outside of that? So, this summer, you'll see a revamping of Rhythm and Reels. We actually have our first one this evening in Carroll Park, and we'll be showing School Days. And we've been introducing new programs. We have an event this weekend: Birds, Bacon, and Brunch.
Bourbon.
Bourbon, bourbon. Cookies and Caboose is a family event that we have during the holiday season for families to come and to watch holiday movies, and then Parked in Pumpkin, which is growing larger and larger every year. We have looked at our programming and continue to make adjustments that we feel are very responsive to what we're hearing from the community. We've had a lot of out-of-school time, so when schools are closed, people look to rec centers to come for reprieve. So, this year, we've had mini spring break camps and summer break camps, and we also have a teen camp. One of the things that's exciting that we've heard is that teens need a space to go where they can feel valued and safe, so we're happy that coming in July, we'll be able to actually open our five new teen centers. These spaces at five rec centers have been outfitted with new furniture and painting, and they will be staffed by young people so that they can come and have a place to commune and to fellowship with each other. And then the other thing that we know is important for young people is employment, so we've been looking at ways and spaces to increase employment opportunities in recreation and parks, and we recently had a Flomity Program at Towanda Rec Center. So, that's our people. The thing that makes it work, our programming, is how we keep people engaged, but our places. We know that people want to go and be in spaces that are clean, that are safe, that are modern, and I'm happy today to say we have $152 million in capital projects actively on the street. That looks very different than when Director Moore began leading this organization six years ago, when they had around $20 million and around five projects. We have 26 playgrounds that are in design, three recreation centers in design, five swimming pools, and under contract and in construction, we have five recreation centers, two swimming pools, and a slew of park improvements. So, as it relates to our spaces, Chief Adam Boorman and Director Moore have prioritized looking at how we make our spaces the best that they can be. So, that looks a little bit different. If you've had the pleasure and honor of coming to Middle Branch, it's not your old rec center. It's spacious, there's room to grow and to program, and you can look through the building. So, for those folks who have not yet had a chance to see it, that's the future of recreation. Those are the places we want to continue to bring to this community. And last, and certainly not least, the one thing that Director Moore and I recognize very on in our term here, leading the agency, is that we can't do this work alone. We need partnerships, good, long, sustainable partnerships. We have been leaning into developing those and re-engaging folks and reimagining how those partnerships can show up. A result of that, we have some amazing things in the pipeline. We have a partnership with Level 82, the Ravens and the Boys and Girls Club at Hilton. Director Moore alluded to the Kaboom 25 and 5, which will change the landscape of play space in our city. We have a longstanding and growing relationship with Volo to make sure that young people have the skillset and skills and drills for sports. We're working internally with our local partners. Enoch Pratt Library, we're doing programming with. B-SIT, we're launching and working towards addressing the digital divide. We have a program with Muncie where we are re-engaging, returning citizens. We're working with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success on youth programming this summer, and we are identifying and strengthening those partnerships so that we can lock arms with our colleagues and get the work done, because we are better together. So, when we talk about recreation and parks in Baltimore City, we are alive and well. REC 2025, in its third year, has guided our plans and is guiding the work, and we are proud to come before you today to begin to discuss how this year's budget will continue to advance that initiative. And with that, I will turn it back over to our Director.
Thank you, Chief of Staff Falcon. And the last piece that I will highlight, and then we'll jump right into our service areas, is through the support of this administration, this council, we was able to implement a comprehensive plan, and we are working with our consultants. This is a 14-month strategy that's looking at the agency from a comprehensive standpoint, holistic standpoint. One of the values that we've been working on is how we continue to assess our facilities. As you all know, we have now completely assessed all of our swimming pools, majority of our rec centers, and we're working to assess all 262 of our parks, which is a part of this most recent strategy. So, we're really excited about that opportunity, as well as our comprehensive plan is going to look at how we view equity, help us develop a clear strategy around equity, but look at our operational strategies. And another area that they're going to do is look at our rec deserts. Where's the areas in our city that we can improve on our recreational services, and then make recommendations? So, we're truly excited for our comprehensive strategy. All right, so, as I stated earlier, we have 11 services. I'll quickly go through those.
And Director, if you could, if you could fly through these pretty quickly, we're familiar. Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, and one, sorry, Director, I apologize. We've also been joined by Councilman Zeke Cohen, 1st District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District.
Back on now, okay. Our first service area is 644. That is pretty much the control arm of our agency. Just a couple highlights. One I would just pull out in particular is the $45,000 commitment, a one-time funding that we can advance the Wi-Fi in our parks. That is a focus of ours in conjunction with our special agency, B-SIT, of how we can continue to find ways to engage our community and making sure that they enjoy themselves when they come into the park with technology. The, no, did it go twice? The next service area, 646, is Aquatics. Aquatics has gone through and transitioned into new leadership, and what we've seen in the work that Nikki Cobb and her team is doing is phenomenal. One of the things I will highlight there is that since December, we've held seven lifeguard classes, which have yielded 90 new lifeguards. Majority of those lifeguards will be working for us this summer. So, as we continue to increase our lifeguards, we will not see as many of a shortage this year as we've had in the past.
Director, if you could try and stay about six inches away from the mic, just because they're super sensitive. Someone from IT, just let me know.
Okay.
Yep, that's perfect. Thank you. I swear, this is the last interruption. We've also been joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee.
The next area is our 646, which is our Park Maintenance. That is the second-largest division in our agency, and our Park Maintenance Team is responsible for maintaining our 262-plus parks, our athletic fields, to name a few. One of the positives this year is during the state legislative session, and it was implemented last year to go into effect this year, was a $3 million increase to our program Open Space Funding. What that additional funding has been able to do for us is to be able to expand our staffing and our Park Maintenance. There's 17 new positions that will be coming into our Park Maintenance Team courtesy of this additional funding that we're receiving, as well as we have dedicated money now for our playground maintenance, $200,000. So, we're really excited for what's happening there. Youth and Adult Sports is Service 647. As the Chief Staff spoke during her presentation about programs, our commitment to continue to expand and bring back some of the original programs that used to be in our city, Midnight Basketball, number one, but also looking at collaborating and enhancing school opportunities through middle school sports. Senator McCray, this legislative session, committed an additional $200,000 to help us support the operations of this new middle school sports strategy. Our largest service area is our community rec centers. We are really excited where we're going there. One of the things that we did see was some vacancies that started increasing because of some of our current pay. We was able to address that issue, so we're continuing to move our community rec centers forward, continue to find ways to advance the program and opportunities there, and we're excited to also announce that in conjunction with South Baltimore Gateway Partnership, we are renovating the Carroll Park Recreation Center, and in this budget, the city's supporting with $350,000 to add to positions that's needed when this center opens. Special Facilities is one of our enterprise funds. That's the facility that oversees Mimi, Mount Pleasant, Myers, the Middle Branch Rowing Club, to name a few. No additional funding requests at this time. Their jobs are continuing to find ways that they can maintain. And we did do a, had a consultant to look at the operation of K-Murray to determine if that operation can continue to survive as a enterprise fund. So, we are waiting for those results so we can share that with administration and the Finance Department. Holoculture is responsible for our maintenance of all our flower beds throughout the city. We also, they're responsible for the city plots. We've been without someone to kind of manage that operation, but in this budget, we will be hiring a city form coordinator, as well as, as we continue to get, to really move out of the pandemic, events are continuously growing, so we're also going to put in this budget for a new events manager. Senior program continues to grow, is alive and well. We are seeing more seniors starting to come out now as we really get outside of this pandemic, and really excited about the program that Leslie continues to do there. And like I said, one of the highlights was the senior symposium this year at the Senior Gala. This is something that they have always wanted to go to, and we was glad that we can put that back. Therapeutic Recreation, Bob does a phenomenal job. We'll continue to find ways that we can expand opportunities with our youth through Special Olympics. As we stated earlier, we had an opportunity for them to be a part of the Special Olympic Swim Competition this year. Our next area is our Park and Parking Program. This is another fund that generates our support, supported through revenue. This is where all our special events, and they're really moving forward with some new exciting programs that we look forward to this year. And then finally, we have our Service Area 654, which is Urban Forestry. Urban Forestry is responsible for maintaining, planting, and removing trees during emergencies. And as we receive $3 million in additional special funds through tree mitigation, one of the things we're going to do is continue to upgrade and increase positions there, and we will be having a new urban foster. Mr. Chair, that yields my services, and I'll yield that time back to you.
Thank you, Director. We've also been joined by Councilman Isaac Gitzey Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. Do we have CAO Lee here? Okay, can we get, is it possible to get MOHS Director Augustin? Okay, I'll yield until she arrives. Let's start with Councilman Dorsey. Or actually, no, I'm not going to start with you, because I got to talk to you about something. So, Councilman Burnett, and then we'll go to Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Director Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Director Moore. Um, so the first thing I wanted to discuss here, um, there have been, um, pretty significant concerns raised, uh, generally across the city about park maintenance, but I do want to lift up, you know, obviously I chair, um, Gwynne Falls Linkin Park with the, uh, Sixth and Seventh Councilmatic Districts, and, uh, work very closely with the Friends of groups who do, I think, a yeoman's job at, um, you know, volunteering in the park, doing cleanups, hosting events. Um, but there remains, um, pretty significant concerns that have been raised to my office about maintenance of trails, of the green spaces, um, you know, and the park is uniquely situated, as you're aware, it's one of the largest wilderness parks in the country. It's very different than the other parks in the city, uh, which I would, you know, I want to, you know, minimize the effort that go into it, but most of them is just mowing and tree trimming, whereas Gwynne Falls Linkin Park, you know, you have invasive species, you have a tremendous amount of wildlife, um, there's hiking trails, I mean, there's just, it's different than the other parks. Um, what are some unique, um, ways that we can improve the maintenance of the park? And I, and I'll send you a list of some of the things that I've gotten from community members that, you know, are in the park every day and have just, again, they, they're willing to help out, they're willing to volunteer, but obviously they have their own personal capacity to, to manage these issues. Um, and it's my understanding that there were, there are at least no more than two folks, two staffers sort of tasked with maintaining the park, which, again, maybe suffice in some other, some of the other smaller parks, but this one is pretty big. It's one of the biggest in the country and pretty uniquely situated in, in the types of things that it needs. How can we build a strategy to, to better improve the general maintenance of, uh, Gwynne Falls Park?
Councilman, that's a, that's a great question. And I, I think one of the things, you mentioned one word earlier, and that was capacity. Um, one of the things that I will share about our agency, there's, we're responsible for 4,700 acres of, of park space, and you're absolutely right. Gwynne Falls is a beautiful forested area, it's over 700 acres. Um, and one of the things that I shared with, you mentioned earlier, is with the additional program open space, we're able to bring, uh, we're going to hire five more labors to go in our park maintenance to try to help with some of this. Um, but we're going to also look at other strategies of what we can do. One, one of the areas, if you recall, two years ago, you probably getting all kinds of calls about the mowing, um, in our parks. Now you, you're not getting those calls anymore. And one of the things we did, uh, under the leadership of Deputy Director Willing, is that we looked at the strategies and we found an effective way to make sure that we could hold our contractor responsible. And also we've created dashboards that we've shared with you also now you know when your, your areas are being cut. So I think that's a, something that we have to continue to look at is look at our current staff and look at is there opportunities that we can expand contract to help support some of these larger park areas. Um, but that's something that we'll continue to, to try to explore and look at what other strategies are out there, uh, because beyond just capacity. Um, and I, uh, one of the things that the Chief of Staff spoke about also is the partnership that we're, we're doing with Muncie now and seeing how, um, their program, um, what's it called?
The Return and Sendings Program. So we are looking at different ways to increase our capacity that don't just result in us doing the effort. So, uh, one of the things that Deputy Director Willing, he is here, he can speak for himself, but making sure his team is also skilled to do the work. Um, so I know we think that those type of things are just innate, I guess, um, but he's been working to make sure that we have the vendors that come in and teach the team how to use the tools and make sure we're maximizing our efficiency. So it is capacity building that we need to do with, um, enlarging our staff and then finding out what type of partners can continue to, we can engage with to complete the work.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I'd love, love to talk more about that in, in particular, if we can meet offline. Um, I know one of the things, not in Gwynne Falls Park, but Still Meadow Community Fellowship Church, has been working similarly with neighborhood residents to train them on like how to safely operate chainsaws and, uh, do other sort of wilderness-based activities, um, because they also have a pretty significantly sized privately owned, uh, forested, forested area behind their church and, but they're trying to, you know, make it more of environmentally sustainable. I mean, there's, you may have heard of their work, may not, but they're, they're doing amazing stuff in there. And they're significantly smaller, but heavily forested area. And I think that there's definitely opportunities to build, uh, workforce training into park maintenance. And those are careers that I think a lot of people, until they started doing, I had not, I didn't even know there was a certification for, uh, I mean, I should be certified. Don't, don't give me a chainsaw, uh, because I'm, will lose a limb, I'm sure. Um, but I didn't know that this was a thing. And so I think if there's opportunities to really build that out in ways that can be, meet some, help meet some of the unique challenges, because I know at one point, we literally had a volunteer, Mr. George Ferent, um, who would, if a tree fell on the trail, would be out there with his own chainsaw. I saw him myself sawing and reopening trails and doing, I mean, he was always there, he moved. Um, and so now we're sort of seeing that there's sort of a slide back, um, from the volunteer work that they were doing. Um, and we just started trying to fill that gap, because I know, I mean, there's, it could be its own budget in itself to, to really preserve that space, um, the way that it really needs. But I think just kind of catching up on the deferred maintenance would be helpful in these kind of partnerships, I think would be useful to learn more about and see how we can better partner. So I'd love to talk about that offline. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. And Councilmembers, I just wanted to, um, speak on the issue, the topic of the trail maintenance that you mentioned. Well, in October of 2022, we started a trail management program. We, um, brought on two new positions, which were trail naturalist positions, and their sole responsibility was to maintain the paved and unpaved trails, all, everything that was in our inventory. And that's something that has been done, that's drastically reduced the number of SRS and work order requests that we received. Those two positions are currently vacant, um, because one of the trail managers left in October of 23, um, I'm sorry, of, um, last year. And one just left in, actually, one, I'm sorry, one left in January of this year, and the other one left in April. Um, so those positions are currently advertised and we are, you know, actively recruiting for those positions, but we do have a trail maintenance management program in place to do just that. Thank you.
This is exactly my question. Why are these positions vacant? I, um, don't know if anybody from Wreckin Parks was listening to the DHR, um, hearing yesterday, but basically I brought up the issue of people being brought in to do one job and then being asked to do something completely different. It's my understanding that a driver behind these departures was that they were being asked to do far more than simply manage trails and, and oversee the maintenance that needs to happen. Instead, uh, you know, where I think that the, the job of trail management is to understand the needs of the trails and then ask for actual maintenance work to be done by maintenance workers. Instead, these trail managers were being asked to actually be the maintenance workers. What's our understanding of this?
Yep, I'd be happy to respond to that. So, uh, in our recruitment process, when we are bringing on new candidates, one of the things that, uh, Ms. Green and her team does is they go in the interview over the expectations of the job. So as we envision that those trail positions, they would be, they would be completing maintenance tasks. Um, so unfortunately, uh, the, the two, uh, team members that we have are no longer with us. We're confident that our recruitment will yield, uh, additional people who will want to engage in that, but we are very clear throughout the interview process about what a realistic day in the job is. Um, and sometimes those things are misaligned, even though people are told exactly what it was. So our, our vision for that position was not someone who would just dial it in and call back the SRS. Our, our hope was that we would have, they would be tooled with the proper equipment to make minor repairs, and if there were team, if there were times where they needed to, uh, have other team members join them, that they would do that. But our, our envisioning for that team is to, to provide the, the type of, uh, care that we know the trails need. And we, we do envision growing that program, but our initial stab at having the position was a maintenance position that managed the space. So there may have been some misalignment between what the candidates heard and what the lived experience was, but we definitely, uh, expressed that during the interview process, both through the posting and through the actual interview with, uh, park maintenance and that leadership team. So I'm, we're happy to talk to candidates that the, if you've been told a different story to figure out where we can, uh, solve the disconnect so we don't have that same experience in this current recruitment.
And so that listing is up right now, and if I went and read that listing, it would reflect what you're saying.
I believe so, yes.
Um, two trail managers slash maintenance workers, um, is woefully insufficient for the city. I, I hear you saying that we want to grow this program, but two is woefully, woefully insufficient. Um, maybe if they had more room to call on maintenance to do the actual work, we might be approaching the realm of that being like maybe a half or a quarter of what the city actually needs. But two is especially for requiring them to do the actual maintenance work is just completely insufficient. What can we do? What, what do you need? What is your capacity? If you had more money, what would be the capacity to increase that number today?
Well, our current budget includes increasing the park maintenance staff, right? So we, we know that we need to continue to work with the administration to address it, um, but we went from zero trail managers to two. And while it may seem insignificant, I think it lends to the progress that we're making, right? So we know that in order to get where we need to be, we need to continue to scale up and to evaluate our progress. So this administration has been extremely supportive of what we're attempting to do in building our capacity. Um, so.
Let, let me try to ask the question a little differently.
Okay.
If we had money to add more trail manager positions, is there the management capacity above that level to have more right now? Or what else do you need beyond just more positions for trail managers?
Sure.
So just quickly jumping, if, in this year's budget, and I mentioned that earlier in the overview, we're adding an additional position, a supervisor for the trail maintenance. So yes, there's, we're, we're identifying that we need someone to kind of oversee that, that group, so it's just not the two guys that's out there by themselves. So that is in the budget currently for a new supervisory position.
Hang, hang on, can I jump in, Councilman, um, and Director? How much more, let me ask a question a little more directly on behalf of the Councilman. How much more can you sustain and increase capacity under the current structure and then, once you add that additional supervisor?
So we would need to evaluate, um, the, the entire plan. We can't just add the labors or the actual field work, we're understanding how that affects the management structure. Um, so I'm going to just pause for a second and ask some of Chief of Forestry, because he also, his team does lend some support into what we do on the trails. Um, but as we look at how we expand and scale up, it, it takes a couple of things. We need the skilled staff to actually perform the work in appropriate supervision and to figure out exactly how we could handle the increased capacity. So it's not just to add more trail workers to our inventory.
Thank you, Jocia. And I can't speak to why our trail. Maybe a little closer? Okay. Um, so I can't speak to why the two trail staff left. Um, I, I don't know them well enough to do that. Yeah, I, I met them on several occasions, but what I can speak to is the fact that they did work with my team fairly well. Um, primarily, you know, my general foreman, when they had things on trails that they couldn't handle, um, which came up, you know, large trees, uh, they would rely on us to come out there and, and lend them a hand. And I, I think that aspect of this worked really well. Um, they also worked very well with our natural areas unit, and that's where, uh, Councilman Burnett mentions the, the workforce development out at Still Meadow. Um, we're involved, we forestry are, are involved in that as well. We're going to be part of the curriculum of that, and we're looking very much forward to that workforce development component. And I think that's going to be the key to our capacity building. Um, I would love to have, you know, these positions we're talking about after we evaluate what we can actually take in and manage, um, be filled with, with those candidates out of this program. It is a new program, um, that they're piloting out at Still Meadow, but I, I think that the design of the program is very well, and it will hire people from our community to work in our parks, their parks, right? Which I think is a great setup. Um, and I think that's going to really help us build capacity, and hopefully we can create a career ladder for those, those folks so they can get into these positions and maybe, you know, away from the, uh, the hard labor of work eventually. Um, but really, you'd be a, be a good candidate pool for us to get this work accomplished.
I, I would like to know, to whatever extent possible, before the end of the day Tuesday, what we believe the capacity for personnel management to be under the new, the, the new added position? If we have that one new added position for management, what level of structure, let's say two levels below that, do we have the capacity for?
Got it. Tiffany, good. Thank you. We've been joined by Councilman, uh, Mark Conway, uh, Fourth District. Uh, we're going to jump over to Councilman Cohen.
Mr., Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Can I ask one very, very brief, very related question?
If, if it is beyond succinct, yes, you can, Councilman.
Can Wreckin Parks please ask B C I T to improve the geolocation function in Salesforce so that when I drop a pin in the app, it can know more or less where I'm talking about on trails? Because right now I cannot report a trail location with 311 anywhere on the Herring Run Trail, only on city streets. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Moore and your team. Um, you know, I do want to begin by acknowledging that the equity for Easterwood folks are here, um, and were very present during the taxpayers' night as well. And it is my hope that that situation can be mediated in some way so that everyone can win. Um, that said, um, I do want to acknowledge that I think you all are some of our best professionals here in Baltimore City. I have really appreciated the work that you've done. I really appreciate you raising your hand and being the second agency to want to be trained in trauma-informed care and have personally seen just a lot of growth among staff. Um, and I also appreciate, Jocia, you, uh, Chief, Jocia.
Councilman, give, give the mic a little space.
Sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate you showing up at the task force. Um, so I just want to say that for the record, that I really appreciate the work that Wreckin Park does, and I hope you all stick around. Um, that said, Chairman, are we doing one question or two this round?
We're, we're doing one.
Okay. So I wanted to ask about one of the frequent issues that has come up for me and I think for some of my other colleagues that have parks, which is people driving in the park and people with off-leash dogs in the park. This has been a persistent challenge for, at probably the dawn of eternity, certainly since I've been in city council. Um, and it really hasn't gotten much better. Um, I know that we've had conversations about reinstating the ranger program, um, but it really degrades the experience of people in our city when they come to the park and there are cars, whether it's Druid Hill or Patterson or any of them, flying this way and that way, and when there are off-leash dogs, uh, which, you know, whether your dog is nice or not, someone else's dog may not be. And so if the dog is off-leash and it runs up to some other dog, they get into a fight and we have a big problem. Or God forbid, the dog bites a child. So I want to ask, um, this administration, uh, what is the current plan? And I would like to see some real action on this issue. I feel like, again, we've been talking about it for six years, and at least in my district, it's gotten worse. Um, and so the, I'm trying to formulate a request here, but what's the current plan? And can we get a commitment to a plan to reduce both of these issues with the rangers or with whomever within the next six or eight weeks?
Councilman, I, I can't commit that we'll have a full strategy in place to reduce this in the next six to eight weeks. I think you're absolutely right. Um, in my six years, this has been a challenge, and before I arrived here, it was a challenge. And it's, it's not just a Baltimore city challenge, it's a, it's a national challenge. Um, our team has worked, and I can get Lyle Jenny to speak a little bit about what we've done to this point. Uh, we do have rangers that are going through the interview process right now, but I want to just highlight, that's only five positions for our, for a city that has 262 parks, just to be, from the reality standpoint. Some of the pilot programs that we saw is that we did some work in conjunction with animal, uh, control. Um, and what the off-leash dog owners would do is they'll see these people, they will put the dogs on their leash. their dogs on their leash. But unfortunately, I don't have someone that can sit in a park 24 hours a day that can help enforce this. Other things, I think we've worked with your office, I've worked, spoke with Councilwoman Ramos about some of the same topics, is looking at strategies of do we create an area of a park that can be open for off-leash dogs? Is there a time period that you can look at to offer an off-leash dog opportunity? And what you hear from some of the off-leash dog owners is that they're not interested in going to the dog park. They want to be able to let their dogs run free and do their exercise. So, that's something that we will continue to try to work with your office, Councilwoman Ramos' office to address. We will be happy to see our rangers come, but I'd see our rangers are only gonna be in these parks for a certain period of time. And if they see it, they can address it. But unfortunately, that's not something I can just commit and say, we can just solve that problem in six, eight weeks. The additional thing I think you asked about, if you mind...
Director, what's an appropriate timeframe that you can get back to the councilman?
I mean, I think we can, we can, I mean, we can get back in six to eight weeks. But I think his question was, can we have a plan in place to reduce it in six to eight weeks? But I think we can come up with a strategy of some things that we can put in place in six to eight weeks. But, and we'll see what that yields.
Yep. So, let's plan on July 31st. That gives you about seven weeks. Tiffany got that? So, July 31st, a plan for next steps on this issue. Does that work?
That...
Councilman, you good with that?
Yeah, that works.
All right, great.
And again, I do acknowledge...
Let's wrap up.
It is a complicated, national problem. It's happening in a lot of cities, totally get that. And it's been six years, not, you know, not just a couple of weeks. And I just feel like we need to make some meaningful progress. And it's both off-leash dogs and folks driving all around the park. And I do think enforcement is important.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I want to be included in that too.
Wait, what?
I just wanted to be included in that as well.
Okay.
I mean, I think for...
Hold on, everybody stop. Okay? Everybody stop. Okay? The only people that are speaking are those recognized by the chair. Any committee request that comes in will be shared with the entire council. Director Moore, you've answered the question. Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos, any committee request that comes in, you will be able to see everything. They are all gonna be uploaded to our OneDrive folder. Councilman Cohen, you've completed your question, correct?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Moore.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Director. You know, obviously, the council has received a lot of advocacy, complaints, problems regarding, I guess, the status of like where everything is going with Easterwood. Could you just kind of like outline where we are with Easterwood? Any renovations we're doing in Easterwood? The skate park in Easterwood? Like, what's the overall plan for Easterwood?
Good question, Council President. So, where we are right now with Easterwood is our agency is assessing the entire park. And as part of that park, if you've been to Easterwood Park, while there was conversations around the skate park, in this assessment, there's many things that need to be done to that park. And what we as an agency did is look at this from a holistic standpoint. And number one is that we need to improve the play space for the kids. That has to be our top priority. We have to find a place where kids can go and play and enjoy. The second thing is that we have a lot of seniors that use that park. And I've seen seniors that are walking every morning out on those fields, no walk paths. And we want to address that. So, what our team is doing is that we're in design to improve those walking paths. We're in design with Kaboom, not Kaboom, sorry, with Compan right now to design a new play space for that area, as well as what additional amenities that we can do in the park. As part of that, I've heard from our advocates, and they said that we can do all these things, but at the end of the day, the reality comes into play that it is a priority that we have to make as an agency. I will be more than happy to give you a detailed report, sir, that tells you where we are, the timeline that we have for the things that we have in place, and where does the skate park lie in that. But in the current plans, the skate park is not a part of Phase One.
So, when you talk about that assessment, when is it gonna complete?
The assessment's been done. What we're doing now is we're designing the improvements to the walking paths. We are working with Kaboom now, not, Jesus, keep saying Kaboom, Compan to design a new play, the play space for that park as well. Adam, if there's some additional things that you want to add, but we can definitely get you a detailed timeline of what's happening there at that park.
So, the assessment is done. Based off the assessment, Phase One was developed to go over the walking paths and the play spaces you're talking about, right?
Play spaces. Yes, sir. The basketball courts, one, the fences need to be repaired. The basketball courts, there's entranceway problems, entrances that need to be improved in that park as well.
Sinkhole.
Sinkhole, there's many challenges. So, what we have to do is look at life safety as well. And assets versus life safety is important to us too. So...
Now, is there Phase Two at all?
In the current, all we have funding for right now is to address the items that we're gonna, we'll list for you and have in great detail in Phase One. We can look at in the future for Phase Two, which will possibly, that's where the skate park will lie. But in the current position as an agency, based on the funding that we do have, Phase One does not include the skate park.
Understood. Now, the money that was secured from the state for the skate park, was that diverted to do Phase One? Or is that kind of on hold to try to figure out Phase Two?
So, there, Adam, can you address it? But I don't think there's money that was directly identified for the skate park.
That's important enough.
Yeah. But Adam, can you share that?
Yes. Good morning. Adam Borman, Chief Capital Development. So, the funding that you're referring to, we submitted a state grant application specifically for the skate park. We then got comments from the state level that that was not desirable. So, we amended that application to cover the site amenities that we're now pursuing in Phase One.
So, it's important. So, the money that was secured from the state was not, when it was awarded, specific to the skate park?
Correct. The Board of Public Works approval does not include skate park.
Okay. Now, inside of Phase One, Phase Two, or Phase Three, I know that that's an independent rec center. It's a city building, but the Omega Foundation kind of operates it. Is there any improvements that we're supporting as relates to the actual facility at Easterwood Park? The building?
So, I'll try to answer that and Adam, if I miss something. But in the current, no, there's been no strategy around the building itself. Our focus has been, how do we improve the existing green space, the field that's behind the building? And also, we'll be more than happy to work with the organization that runs the building. But we have no intentions in the current phases to address the building needs.
And then, last question related to it, just when we talk about these independent rec centers, is there anything in the budget to kind of support some of these independent rec centers? I'm thinking about Easterwood, Liberty. Is there anything in the budget to help support the operators of the center?
No, sir. In our current budget, there's not. There's a clause in these agreements, and I'll be honest and transparent, we're looking at a lot of these independent organizations that are running these individual sites. But it said that capital improvement is above $50,000 is the only thing. And it doesn't say that we have the money in the budget, but we have to look at that based on priorities of other facilities and what's the condition of that facility versus existing facilities that we're operating as well. But that's the only thing that's in the budget that we have to consider.
Do we do it like a, Madam CAO, you want to speak? No?
So, to that point, the question about the funding for the independent rec centers, at least one, and I will double check to see if other independent rec centers receive funding. But the, at Easterwood, they actually received ARPA funding to support their operations.
Got it. Thank you so much.
And then, on the state funding for this park, it was $500,000, and it was not for the skate park, it was for the park itself.
Thank you so much. The last question is, for the independent rec centers, is there like an audit or some type of annual review of the programs and operations? Or how does that happen?
So, that is an area that we want to continue to improve on as an agency, is looking at not only auditing the programs, but also doing quarterly assessments of the facilities. And we're putting individuals in place that can manage more of these, some of these older contracts that was, that's been in place 10, 12 years, and how we can assess what's happening, as well as looking at facilities to make sure that our operators are maintaining these buildings at the level that they should.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes, before I get into my question, just on the same note as the president's line of questioning, I don't know the specifics about this.
Councilman, please be brief on the follow-up.
This skateboard plan or park, but I know every time I drive down Falls Road, that skate park over there is packed. I've been there for a few events, and it's actually quite incredible. Looks like a lot of fun. So, if you guys have a plan for a skate park, I got a couple of spots in my district you can bring it to. I'd be happy to support that. And it'd be great for the children of the Fit District. Which gets to my question. Director, can you point me to where in your CIP I can find the plan to build a rec center in the Fit District?
Councilman, I was responding to you and say that we are doing a comprehensive strategy. And one of the things I said in the beginning is that we will be asking our consultants, they're looking at all of our rec deserts through the city, and they're gonna be making recommendations. This is a 14-month plan. Once that plan is complete, we will make sure not only is administration gonna see this plan, this plan will be presented to council. So, I'm pretty sure, as they look at your district, sir, there will be recommendations. And then, from there, I think the administration as well as this council will have to look at what strategies we can do to move. But there's no current capital funding for a rec center in the Fit District. And we're just waiting for our comprehensive plan to be complete, sir.
So, when you talk about a plan about all the rec centers in, or all the rec deserts in the city, there's only one. It's my district. I spoke to you about this when you applied for this job. I've spoken to you about this every single budget year since then. And you've now been here five years. And all I've been getting is lip service about that this is gonna be done in the future. I see three new rec centers in your plan for this year being built. I see pools, I see all that. The only pools I have in the Fit District, I tell you every single year the same thing, is the massive potholes that we have. There's no rec opportunities. I do thank Jenny and Ashley for their help in working on the playground for Fall Staff, for the Fall Staff School. But as you can see from that, when there's anything, the kids come out and they use it, because there's nothing. So, who in this agency here is your equity coordinator?
As I said in the beginning, sir, that is something we're excited about in this new budget, is we're actually gonna have an equity officer that can look at our equity. But I also want to highlight, sir, in our many conversations, sir, I have been committed to the city of Baltimore. I've never directly committed to just building a rec center in your district, sir. But I will say again, I am committed to the city of Baltimore. We're gonna look at ways that we can be effective and efficient. And I understand your concerns. And when this comprehensive strategy is done, sir, we're gonna, we as an agency is gonna look at this. And it's gonna come with funding needs, sir. And just want, I'm sorry, not to cut you off, but I just want to highlight, the rec centers that are in the budget that you're speaking of, sir, these are existing rec centers who have completed an assessment. And we have been, has been determined that we have to make a decision if we're gonna continue to operate these facilities or replace these facilities, sir. So, it's not new spaces, new locations.
So, the rec centers in design, those are not new centers, you're saying?
No, sir.
Okay. So, when you talk about that you're committed to the citizens of Baltimore and to the kids of Baltimore, what about the children of the Fit District do you, are you committed to? I mean, because I don't know what is you, what specifically is unique about the children of the Fit District of Baltimore. I was one of them not too long ago as the youngest member of the city council. I grew up in the Fit District. I've lived there my entire life. There's nothing. And I shared that with you. And I've shared that the mayor knows that, the administration knows that. And so, what about the children of the Fit District do you not have that sense of urgency about? That they have no recreational opportunities and you're not doing anything about it? And you've been here five years, we spoke about this countless times, and you talk, you got these rec centers in design, you talk about $152 million in capital projects, you talk about equity in your thing. There is, there is nothing equitable about your agency. So, why do you, why do you, what about the children of the Fit District is unique that you don't feel the sense of urgency to address the only rec desert in the entire city, which is my district? What about them?
Sir, I want, I want to challenge you on the, there's multiple areas in the city that I can, I can take you to right now that doesn't have recreational opportunities. But I won't take this time to address that.
Name one district that doesn't have a rec center other than mine.
Councilman Dorsey's district does not have a rec center.
Which district?
Councilman Dorsey.
Third district.
So, sir, so...
I'm talking about, I'm talking about your assets. There's pools, there's other assets. When we went through that asset map, every single district in the entire city had significant capital assets, whether it was a rec center, a pool, all these other things. I have zero.
Councilman Schleifer, what I will say again is that our agency will continue to work with our consultants, we will look at our comprehensive strategy. We have, we, there is programs, every summer, we offer a program at the Pimpalco Safety Academy. Every summer, we do. We have other events that we do in that community. So, I will basically say to you, sir, that we do provide some programming. While it doesn't have a rec center, as you stated earlier, with your support, there is now a new playground in that area. So, our agency is committed to continue to find ways and strategies that we can address the many needs of the citizens of Baltimore. But I will also highlight and share with you, sir, the rec center that we just opened at Miller Branch, that was a 13-year project for a community that did not have a rec center as well, sir. So, while you feel that we're not moving as fast as we need to, it takes time to build large capital projects. And I mean, that's all I can say to you, sir, at this point in time.
And I understand that it takes time, which is why I want that process to start. But you haven't started that process. Every year, you tell me you're going to, but you haven't. And so, that 13-year process hasn't even started yet. If we were five years in on it, that would be one thing, but we're not. And when you talk about that one playground, I do want you to clarify something, because in your opening statements, you guys said that, you talked about the Kaboom 25 and 5. And then, you mentioned that playground as one of the playgrounds. Was the Fall Staff Playground the Kaboom playground?
No, sir. I mentioned that we opened two playgrounds this past year, which was Dipsky Park as well as Fall Staff. But what we spoke about was our excitement that we're working with a philanthropic giant like a Kaboom, and that we are the first city that's looking at playground inequities. There's challenges throughout this entire city. But we are committed to looking at how we improve those. And once this comprehensive study is complete, sir, you'll be more than happy to share with you. And then, we can look at what other strategies we can do from a funding perspective, how do we move some of these conversations forward. But I do want to highlight for this council as well as yourself, that it takes time to build a large facility that's a $10 to $15 million investment.
Excuse me. All right. Director, we're gonna come back to this topic because we have been having this conversation for a number of years now. I want to introduce Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, member of the committee; Councilman John Bullock, 9th District; Councilman James Torrance, 7th District. We're now gonna go to Councilman Stokes for a question.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. First, I want to thank Wreckin' Parks. They've been very supportive over in my district. But I want to mention two things. I know the last time we talked about when Fall Staff removed stumps in this city, we need to, I think our CAO is here, I think we need some more stump removers. Because what happens is when we move, we move the trees, the stumps stay there forever. And I think we talked about this last year, about additional stump removers for Wreckin' Parks. Because what happens is some of them stumps are so large, if a kid run up and down the street, they can actually hurt themselves. So, that's a request, CAO, some more stump remover. Also, we always talk about rec centers, you know, Wreckin' Parks, money is based on salaries and benefits. There's no money for programming for our young people in this city. When young people have to go down to the harbor to have a good time and walk past many rec centers in this city, we need to put money, funding for every rec center for our young people, but have a conversation with them. Everybody don't play football, and everybody don't play basketball. We have to sit down with them and find out what brings them into these rec centers. STEM is great, but that's math. We have to have a conversation with our young people. We have not done that. There's no way in the world, young people supposed to be walking past rec centers in this city. So, my request is, is to the administration, put more money in for all rec centers in this city for programming. But first, let's have a conversation with the young people to find out exactly what they want in a rec center. And I can almost promise you, your rec centers will be crowded, and they won't be walking past it. Because I know Wreckin' Parks do well in basketball leagues, but everybody don't play basketball.[1791.93] Because I know, uh, Wreckin Parks do well in basketball leagues, but everybody don't play basketball. Wreckin Parks do well in football. Everybody don't play football. STEM is a math, but again, I'm emphasizing again, until we have a conversation with young people in this city about what they want to see in a rec center, they going to continue to walk past the rec centers. But we have to have the funding for them so they can come into that rec center. I'm going to just mention, at the Oliver Center at one time, Anthony Dees used to run that center. You know how many people would be in there? 300. Sewing, movies, um, dance, all that. We don't see that no more. That worked a long time ago. Maybe we need to go back and see how rec centers ran before. But right now, we have to get the funding and make sure we have, um, a conversation with our young people. So we can make sure they be coming to them rec centers. And Mr. Moore, you know, I've been working with you with the rec council 2024. We have to create rec councils that bring in the business, that bring in the community, that bring in young people and start having that dialogue to find out not just what the young people want. We need the families to participate and be a part of our rec centers also. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, I just want to thank, um, our, our colleagues for their comments as well. I do agree with Councilman Stokes as it relates to the stump grinders. I also appreciate, uh, Council President Mosby recognizing the need for operational support for some of our independent rec centers. I think about the operational, um, and capital needs in places like, um, the Model Rec Center in, in Poppleton. And I know you're very much aware of that. Uh, but I do want to pivot, um, to another, uh, point. So I, I appreciate everything that Wreckin Parks does and we know that it's important to give our young people positive activities to prevent them from engaging in some negative behaviors. And unfortunately, we had some incidents around some of the rec centers. Um, I know we've had some conversations around, um, security. Uh, can you talk about the impact that security may have on your budget, not only now, um, but in the future? Whether we're talking about folks who are in person or if we're thinking about devices? Can you talk a little bit about that, please?
That's a good question, Councilman Bullock. As you stated, we had, have some conversations around some of the challenges that we face in some of our rec centers. Uh, we have brought on M4. Uh, M4 is not a, uh, it's a security office that patrols our spaces. They do not physically stay in our spaces for extended periods of time. Um, that, uh, first, uh, project is going to cost us about $200,000. Um, that's something that we will have to continue to find strategies of how we, um, can fund this. But I will, I will tell you that the, the, the comments I've received from our staff have been overwhelmingly positive. And they really appreciated our team, um, moving up and stepping up. But one of the other things I want to highlight is that decision wasn't made lightly beyond just speaking to administration, speaking to, to different council members that direct the impact. We created a safety committee and we brought, we now have a safety committee that meets monthly. And we have individuals from the rec centers, um, as well as leadership, as well as managers. And we're not just looking at depending solely on security. We're looking at what additional opportunities we can do. Um, if it means increasing lighting around our facilities, if it means getting forestry to come out and look at some of our areas. Is there blind spots? Can we improve those areas so that when the staff comes out at night? Um, identification, looking at uniforms. Um, another thing we, we've done is we have redesigned our signage to make sure everyone understands our rules and regulations and what we're going to do to implement those. Also, um, as we have civic rec, making sure that everyone is checking in and out. So while we have security, we don't feel the security is a long-term solution and it's not a solution that we want. And that's why we're looking at other strategies and working with our safety committee to define plans around things beyond. And we're not, we don't feel that we're at the point where we need melod detectors in our facilities. We don't want to send that message as well. So we're just going to continue to work with our team, continue to develop strategies. Um, and make sure that our team continues to feel comfortable to, to do the jobs that they're, they're committed to do every day.
Thank you. And one, a quick follow-up, um, again to Councilman Stokes' point. You know, obviously not everyone, um, plays basketball, football. But one thing I'm very excited about is Charm City Games returning. And I know my kids are in track and field. Um, but the different, um, thing I want to talk about is swimming. Uh, we know nationwide there's been an issue, uh, with the scarcity of lifeguards. I don't know if that's come up thus far, but can you talk if that's impacting Wreckin Parks this year?
Yes, sir. I will, I will highlight and say that we're in a much better position this year coming to our swim season. Uh, we, as I shared earlier on, we've had seven lifeguard trainings that have yielded 80 lifeguards, new lifeguards. Majority of those lifeguards have signed on for us. With the support of, of this administration last year and this council, we was also able to address another need, wha, which was we had the lowest paying lifeguards in the entire region. We're now in the middle of the pack. Another thing that we've instituted with support administration is a bonus. Like with the lifeguards going through the entire season at the end of the year, is a, a lot of them go back to college in those places. A nice $250 bonus that they can take back with them. So our, our aquatics team has done a phenomenal job of getting into schools and growing. So while we're not at full capacity, we're in a much better position than some of my colleagues around the state. And it's, and I attribute that to my aquatics team under the leadership of Nikki Call.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have a question about, um, permitting for the use of the parks. Um, uh, I love it that many people want to use our parks, which is great. Um, we, I also know it's, it seems like the, uh, capacity of the office to do all of the permitting and work with DOT and all of that is, um, obviously an issue. We've had some issues with Clifton. Um, it's such a well-used park, which I'm grateful for. Can you talk a little bit about what capacity you actually need to be able to, um, you know, get, allow for the, you know, the permitting process to be more, you know, efficient in terms of not just communication with, um, you know, internally, but also, you know, with communities? Because one of the things that we want is to have the permit office contact communities or us about what's happening in the park so that we're all prepared. And if we know something, then there would be, you know, an opportunity to. So anyway, what's the capacity need there?
Um, so we are working with, um, a citywide team that the city administrator has convened to look at, uh, special events permitting throughout the city. Um, I, you alluded to it earlier, but the special miss, the special permits process is not a BCRP process. It's a citywide process. So when we talk about capacity, we have to, uh, get a better handle collectively of what the needs are to process the amount of special event permits that we have. So we're engaged in that work, um, with our citywide team. And I think after that work is completed, we'll have a better understanding about what the capacity for the city needs to process permits. So it's a, it's not a BCRP singular function. It is a cross-city function.
Does the CAO want to say anything about that?
Sure. So we convened a working group probably about six to eight months ago with all of the agencies that are involved in the special events permitting process. And during the summer months, I actually convene a weekly meeting, um, on Wednesdays of each, uh, week where we talk through what are the events for the upcoming weekend that are permitted as well as any unpermitted events. Um, so that we can ensure that we have the proper coordination with our public safety agencies and partners, um, as well as city services. Um, we have a beta, um, app that we've released where we now are moving, um, the permitting process online. So if you go to the DOT website, you can actually right now, today, apply for a special, um, a special event permit online. Um, and we're testing that out. So we haven't rolled that out and, um, uh, done a full campaign around it because we just want to test, um, to see how, um, that system works. Um, and that's going to be a part of a more fulsome set of recommendations about how we can streamline and improve our permitting process.
Uh, great. Um, and then, but that also include, that also goes to what the, what is the solution when there is an unpermitted event? Um, because we've actually had that issue at Clifton as well. Look, as long as people behave is fine with me, um, but that's not always the case.
Yeah. So in these weekly meetings is where we share intel on any unpermitted events that we've seen on social media or that we've heard through word of mouth. Um, and then we, um, organize and strategize about how to respond using our public safety assets or if it happens to be, um, youth-led events, oftentimes we will, um, we will deploy our outreach workers. If we know of an event ahead of time, we actually can work with the law department and draft a cease and desist, um, to, and, and share it with the organizers of said event. I think the, the broader goal here is that we want people to use our parks and we want people to use our facilities. We just want them to, to go through the proper permitting process. And so even in times where we have to work with the law department, which we've had to do to provide these cease and desist letters, um, we are off, we are also going and offering to assist people to apply for permits in the right way.
Um, just to highlight, the ban shell at Clifton, um, is not going to be available. So, but we do have unpermitted events there. So we'll just, uh, work with you offline about that. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before my question, I just got a emergency text that says Liberty Walk 2 Pool is unlocked and the community are swimming at night. So if that could be handled ASAP, that's kind of a very important safety issue. Um, my question, I guess, goes all the way back to the conversation with, um, the third district council person. And you had made a comment and something he said that you were contracting out, you were going to contract out. And that kind of struck a nerve with me. Uh, we as a legislative body are very much interested in, uh, career building. And, uh, and it was mentioned, um, how we just seem to always talk about ways of trying to build jobs in this agency. And I know, um, I thank Dan for bringing up the workforce development piece with that program, Two Positions. Um, and you're mentioning about, um, something with, uh, park maintenance. But, uh, one of us, or I continue to mention, um, apprenticeships. And I know that there were some that you were trying to do with, uh, forestry to try to alleviate that. But we keep bringing the conversation up and lots of money is spent to, for contracting out, whether it's cutting grass or whatever. Um, we need to start connecting with pre-apprenticeships with the school system. They are, in my eyes, are waiting for that help in that partnership. And, um, you can connect with the, the Labor Commissioner. There's, I keep mentioning again, there is a specialist that's assigned to Baltimore City that helps create apprenticeship programs. And it can start in the high schools for labor careers in, whether it's, uh, stu, young people are very much interested in all the activities and things that you do. I know you have a strong youth, a youth program, but that's temporary stuff. We need to stop. That we need to work hard, sit down and really figure out a way to build careers in your department. It's an interest with our young people. Give me an update on, you know, some things that you are doing. But please don't ever say that you are contracting out stuff because that, to me, you're spending more money doing that. And to me, it shows a sign of laziness in not sitting down and really discussing how you can get jobs into your agency. And I'm talking about strong labor positions and all positions. We're having problems with these parks because we have people that don't care when you contract out. All they want to do is cut the grass and grab the money. And then sometimes you got to go back and, because they do a, a terrible job. That's just one phase of the wonderful things that could develop in your agency. Um, Director Moore, please comment.
Councilman Mills, I want to start by, uh, sharing some things. We currently have a, first I'll start with our park maintenance team. We have seasonal maintenance aides that are currently, we have 15 positions that's in our park maintenance, three in each division. Those are two-year training programs. And at the end of those two years, based on negotiating with the union, we have to find those individuals jobs. We have people that are in those positions now. We also have a tree apprenticeship program. The challenge that we face is that these people get into the program, they'll start, because one of the things I think sometimes people don't understand, it's a lot of skill and it's a special skill that's needed to cut a tree. We just can't have people pull out the streets and in a week, we got them cutting trees. We can't. So they have to go through the apprenticeship program. The challenge is they can't finish the apprenticeship program because it is a sensitive position and they have to, they will be tested from time to time. And they test out the program because they fail potential tests. So it's not that we're not trying. It's not, and I will tell you by no means are anyone in our agency being lazy and by no means are we wanting to bank on the contract industry to solve all our problems. But what I can tell you is that the contracts that we do have in place, that we have a QA system that's in place that is holding our contractors accountable. I don't think you can go into a park in our city right now and complain about any grass issues in our parks. And it's because of what the work that Deputy Director Willen is doing to make sure that our contractor is doing that work. I don't want to align contractors, but we have to manage expectations and we have to look at our current workforce. I will tell you another thing that I've done, uh, we've done as an agency is we have looked at our park maintenance, um, team. Our park maintenance team is aging out. So we're looking for opportunities so that we can start developing a younger group to replace this, this, these individuals that at some point in time are going to start retiring. So we're not sitting back and depending on contractors. We're looking at strategies of how we can continue to advance our program, how we can continue to bring individuals in to train. But I, I will also say that pe, young people are making other career decisions. Some people are not interested in, um, in park maintenance. And so I think we have to continue, we'll work with the school systems. I've been speaking to Yolanda, Yolanda Jiggs and the program that she has over in Park Heights and seeing how the program that she has in place, is there opportunities that's there? So I can assure you that we're, we're willing to wo, work and with any colleague, any partner that has training programs and find ways that we can continue to fill our positions and continue to build our workforce. Because I do know at some point in time, that workforce and park maintenance is going to age out. And we got to make sure that we're working now to come up with a strategy to address that. So I, I want, I will say that and I'll yield to my chief of staff who can talk a little bit more or anything I missed.
So one of the things we're doing agency-wide is capacity building, right? So I think, uh, when the mowing crisis happened, uh, we became much more aware of the need to skill up in our park maintenance team. One of our current challenges is there is no career path for a park maintenance worker in recreation and parks. As I alluded to earlier, we're working with our colleagues in DHR to create a park maintenance worker series, one, two, and three. So in addition to having entry-level jobs, it needs to be a career path and a career, a career ladder. So we're working with our, our team at DHR to make that a reality. But also, one of the things that Ed is committed to is making sure his team is regularly trained. Um, I think that because we are so busy and we're a lean team doing the work, we have to make intentional time to skill up. Um, Ed is working on us having more green equipment, right? So that we want to be an agency who is leaning into conservation. So our tools should be solar powered or electric instead of gas. So those are the things that we are tooling the team with. And at the same time, we recognize that we need to have some succession. We have an active succession plan. We are on year three of our lead cohort, which this year includes members from our park team. So not only can we make sure that they're skilled, that they're also able to lead and be managers and people leaders. Because it's one thing to have a skill set. We also need competent and empathetic leaders. So we have an internal succession plan program, uh, that the council president comes every year and talks to our graduating class. So we are making active strides on, one, assessing our current team. Two, making sure the resources are in place to continue to advance them. And then looking at how we work at workforce development. Had a conversation with Living Classrooms yesterday to talk about how we can continue to look at their workforce development arms and figure out how we can plug them back into the agency. So even though there was a comment about, um, leaning on contractors, our internal goal has been throughout the six years we're here is capacity building. So you will always see us pouring into professional development, looking at ways to make sure our team is compensated appropriately and they want to stay. So we're very intent on it. And when we talk about that apprenticeship program, we recognize there are challenges, um, with the drug and alcohol screenings. We're, we're in active conversation with our colleagues at DHR to see how that affects to us and what we can do. We're looking at how we expand opportunities to dreamers. So we've been in contact with the law department to figure out, how do we get people who are dreamers, who are in the United States illegally under that space? How do we employ them? They're employable. How do we work in spaces to diversify our workforce in that place? So, um, I can say confidently that we are looking at every way to make sure that we are delivering services in, in a real and effective manner. But recognizes the current challenges we have with capacity and skill set and making sure we're leaning into that. But then also working with local colleges and universities to figure out how we create a pipeline, not only for recreation, but also for park maintenance. I do want to highlight though that our ability to, to retain and attract skilled laborers is diminished. We have probably three skilled laborers in our entire organization. We continue to recruit. We continue to make offers. We continue to have vacancies. So we're working with the administration and our colleagues at DHR to figure out a strategy particularly for. strategy, particularly for skilled laborers, to make sure we have plumbers and carpenters and those things that are ripe for an apprenticeship program, to figure out how we can fill these vacancies that continue to come about.
Have you connected to any of our career and technology education high schools?
We haven't made any meaningful strides in those conversations, but it is, and my Chief of HR is behind me, so she can speak to it. But that is in our portfolio of things that we want to strategize about how to improve. But right now, we have been leaning into increasing the internal capacity for our current workforce, and then figuring out how we can maximize what we're getting from our contractors while we continue to scale up and make those workforce development and apprenticeship programs a reality.
Well, I'm suggesting that the training must start in, must start in high school. We can't just continue to do the same old thing and going back to, you know, community colleges and so on. We have to, we're in a dire need. We've got to start early, and that's in high schools. And that's why we have this blueprint with the school system. That's why we've started career technology education schools like Forest Park, like Carver. They, these, they're looking for ideas, and we need someone from your office to go to these schools, work with these people, and the state has a specialist that will help you create a program. They, that's their job. There is someone assigned to Baltimore City. It's a Maryland State Specialist. I know firsthand, because I was Director of the State's Apprenticeship System at one time. They are looking to help Baltimore City. And Baltimore City is not reached, government is not reaching out to them.
Rashawn, good to see you. Appreciate all the hard work. I love my Vice President, but I'm tired of hearing her talk about this. It's the same conversation every single year. We need a written plan by Call of Business Tuesday for how you guys are going to have these conversations and what the roadblocks have been. We had a four-hour hearing with the Baltimore City Public School System last night, last evening. They're willing to work with any city agency, per what they told us last night. So can we have a written plan by Call of Business Tuesday for how we're going to meaningfully address the Vice President's concerns?
Chairman, yes, sir.
Our surrounding counties have partnerships with the state in this particular subject, and the city agencies have to start reaching out. That's where the laziness, in my eyes, comes into play.
We're going to make sure you get that written plan by Call of Business Tuesday, Madam VP. Thanks for your leadership on this. Councilwoman, oh, Madam CAO?
Yes.
Brief, please.
Very, very brief. I would offer, I don't think we've done the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. And so what my hope and my strategy around this area is that we actually centralize a lot of the apprenticeship work and the apprenticeships models within the Mayor's Office of Employment Development and have them partner with agencies like BCRP as well as DPW. So I think this is ripe for discussion with Moed, but I will ensure that all the partners are working together around this plan.
Thank you for your attention to it, CAO Leach.
And I just want to add, I appreciate the things that Moed do, but it has to start right within the agencies, because that's where the work is with all the agencies, whether it's transportation, DPW, that's where they're going to get the actual training. Moed is not doing the training. And the first step has to come from the agency itself.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Chief of Human Resources for Recreation and Parks. I just wanted to add to this discussion that in partnership with the Apprenticeship Committee and the Office of the Labor Commissioner, we have started a discussion to begin a building repair apprenticeship. So we have started the work in Recreation and Parks. We're currently in the process of hiring for tree trimmer apprentices. Also, in partnership with DHR, we participated in the high school internship so that they can...
So ma'am, I apologize for cutting up just because we're pressed for time. What I would ask is if you can include that in a written narrative associated with the request on behalf of the Vice President. Before we get to Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Torrance, you have a follow-up that I know is going to be extremely succinct?
Yes, I just want to follow up because I'm just tired of this conversation. We need a municipal apprenticeship program that, I think we need to have a structured plan, because District of Columbia has this program, it works well with their school system. I worked at city schools, we try to have that conversation with different agencies. But the problem is, is that we do have to get MSDE's actual approval for it. So we need a municipal training academy that allows one standard certification across the board, because these young people have to be credited. So I think that the city needs to determine a way that they can work with MSDE city schools to create a municipal training academy, because there has to be standard, it has to be standards based off of a common core. So I think that should be the plan.
Thank you. So Tiffany, if you could please include that in there about a municipal training program? And CAO Leach, if you could please help coordinate amongst BCRP, Moed, and any other relevant agencies with respect to that request, it would be greatly appreciated. Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to go back to the budget book, specifically Service Number 646 and also 649. I want to have a greater understanding about the performance measures, particularly the differences between FY23 and FY24 budget. Just kind of first going to park maintenance for the general public. It says the percentage of park maintenance SRS completed on time was at 50%. And I'm, could you provide an explanation on if we are using the capacity within Baltimore City Rec and Parks and the consultants, why that percentage of SRS completed on time is not higher?
I will start and I will...
Yes, sir.
Deputy Director Willen to add to that. One of the things about our SRS is that, as the Chief of HR was speaking about, we are having, we have building and maintenance repairs. We have five positions in our entire agency that manages over 120-plus facilities in parks of 262. So within those five people, what they do is they receive SRS every day, and then they go out and address those. One of the things that we're trying to do is continue to be strategic. Some of the things they've done is they've done blitz. So if they have, say, a rec center that has 10 SRS, they would just have all the different team members go and try to blitz that site. They've tried that opportunity, they've tried to spread them out throughout the city. But I think one of the things that we're continuously seeing there is that it still continues to be a capacity issue. My colleagues in Philly has 77 people doing the same work. I have five. So Deputy Director Willen, can you talk about some additional strategies that you all are doing? And again, this is not where we're wanting to lean on contractors.
Yeah.
We're trying to do more of this work in-house versus giving it to contractors.
Thank you, Director Moore. Just to add on to what Director Moore was saying, we currently in facility maintenance, we have three skilled positions right now. There's one welder, there's one mason, and then there's one painter. So we're currently actively recruiting for HVAC tech, a carpenter, and another mason. And then the addition or the strategy is to add other positions in-house to help us maintain that. But right now, we're at the currently, the, we're at 50%. Because right now, that our resources are restricted because of we don't have, because we don't have the staffing that we need to raise that above 50% right now. So based off those three skilled workers managing all the facilities that Director Moore just mentioned, that is why we're at the 50%.
I appreciate that. And so Chief of Staff, is with the addition, with the creation of the 17 new positions, will that be able to supplement the performance metric of 50%, hopefully raising that percentage? Because one of the things that I'm concerned about, and I understand the issues of capacity within the agency, that's something that we're experiencing all throughout the nation. My concern is that the contractors, from a capacity perspective, are not adding to or supplementing our operations so that that number of completions of SRS is greater than the 50%. Theoretically, if we have contractors on site that are able to do some of the things that you're talking about with regard to operations staff, that number should be increasing. And so can you speak to that, ma'am?
Sure. So we, yes, we anticipate that the addition of staff will lead to increased efficiencies and response time. The benefit of having our internal team do it is that they know our buildings. They know our buildings, they know our people, they can have access to the building without any delay. So our expectation is that the addition of these employees will lend to us being able to deliver our service in a more timely fashion. So yes.
Okay. And so for FY24, when we come back for FY25 budget, that percentage should be increased?
Yes, that's our expectation.
All right, thank you so much, ma'am. And then with regard to the special facilities maintenance recreation, Service Number 649, I noticed that the percentage of operating costs recovered from earned revenue for FY24 is less than FY23 50% target. Can you speak to the reduction of that percentage, ma'am?
Yes.
Or someone from your team? Thank you.
So I just want to check with my CFO. As you know, the special facilities fund is revenue-generated only. It's where your shaking bake, it's where your not pleasant, it's where your Mimi operates and lives, as well as the Kerry Murray Rec Center is operated in that facility. Some of the things that we are seeing, and I kind of alluded to this earlier, is that we did bring in a consultant to look at our operations of some of our facilities, like a Kerry Murray, to ask the questions, should Kerry Murray continue to sit on a enterprise fund when it's not generating the revenue that it needs? Also, so we're looking at that as one. The second thing is, we're looking at strategic ways that we can continue to engage the communities to increase the participation at shaking bake. If I, I will say at this point in time that that target at 30% is a typo, it should be at least at 50%.
It's a what?
It's a typo.
It's a typo?
It's an error on our part. We should not have see a decrease when we're seeing everything else in the city increase.
And it's, and you hit the nail right on the head with the increased youth programming, that number should be going up. I just don't want to leave any type of monies or fund earned revenue, given that, no worries, ma'am, given that the city is in need of revenue, I don't want to leave any earned revenue on the table. So I'm glad to note that that is a typo. Also, wanted to just kind of talk through the horticulture line item, Service 650. When we talk through, and Forestry Department knows some of the issues that have been existing within Carroll Park, some of the other kind of older parks throughout the district, what is the plan for the assessment of the trees within the park? Because some of them are dead, and they're creating public safety issues within some of our parks. And I know last year, we had talked through some of the machinery issues that you all needed last budget cycle. And so can you speak to whether there is any increase in the budget for machinery or assessment of those trees within our parks? And is that under the Horticulture Service Number?
I'm going to yield to Dan, actually. Me and Dan had a conversation about this this morning when we got here. So Dan can really speak about it, but it falls on the forestry, not horticulture.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, sir.
Hi, Dan Coit, Chief of Forestry. Yeah, so our going plan for catching up on all of this, I'm going to call it deferred maintenance in parks, but the issue really is we are, we're a request-based service, the majority of what we do, and people just, they're not calling these trees in, or frequently they'll call one in and we'll find another tree. So it gets kind of hard to address the issue that, you know, one person sees, because in some parks, there can be so many. So we want to make a concerted effort to clean up our parks, and a key component of that is our inventory. Our inventory is old. It's 2017, it's not super useful at the moment. My plan going forward, and this is still in development stages, we're going through the specifications of finalizing it now, is to get an inventory contract that's active all the time. So the plan is every year, we will have a quarter of the city, including the maintained park spaces, inventoried with recommended maintenance and all that, so that we can always have an up-to-date inventory that we can act off of. And with that inventory, we can take that information and go out and, you know, basically enhance our proactive pruning program to not only capture street trees on the neighborhood level, but also parks, to clean them up systematically. And then the idea with it being a quarter of the city years is not, is twofold. It's to keep our inventory up to date constantly, but we're going for a three-year contract with two renewals, which means this will be cyclical. This will just be part of the work that we're doing all the time. In the interim, what I have initiated as an expansion on our proactive program is, I want to start with our big parks. We actually just started in Endured Hill, and that's what Director Moore is referencing, and sending out the Urban Forester to go out there and inspect and look for these dead trees, write them up and get them addressed through our proactive program.
And I appreciate that response. I just want to make sure that we're actively doing that. Reviewing the budget book, it wasn't much of an increase in the operations of staff within forestry. I know that you're bringing on two urban forester positions to support these efforts. I wonder if, from a capacity perspective, those two forestry positions will actually help and provide the capacity that you need? Because I know how many SRS my office sends to forestry, I know how many SRS the community sends to forestry. And so I just want to kind of put that on the bandwidth, because with trees, as we approach climate change, there are going to be a significant amount of issues within our trees, within our city, not only within our parks, but also within our neighborhoods as well. And it creates infrastructure issues. So I really want us to like really think proactively about that, how we can expand, how we can expand the capacity of that particular, of that particular department. And then my last question has to do with the recreation for seniors. Again, the reduction of the FY23 budget, I'm sorry, the FY23 target for, in comparison to FY24, and it's Service Number 651. And so I wanted to ask, what is the plan to get more seniors activated into the city? I'm hoping that, you know, we get more seniors activated with the new Office of Aging. We provide some diverse programming that will attract our seniors and really kind of be a hub for them, because most of them are living indoors, they're living in their homes, and they're not necessarily connected to senior centers. And so we need to make sure that we keep that level consistent between FY23 and FY24.
So one of the things I can say is that our senior program continues to grow, and while our target this year was 80%, and if you look at the target in '22 was 80%, but it actually was 95% participation. So we're continuously finding ways to get our seniors back. It's just, it's a level of comfort. Some seniors are still afraid of, you know, even though we feel the pandemic is moving away. But I can tell you that Leslie does, Yancy does a phenomenal job of programming with our seniors across the city. So...
And how many people are in her shop? Is it just her? It's four people?
It's four people in her shop.
Four people, okay. And so these FY targets, is that cumulative, or is that added to the targets from before? So for example, FY23 target is 13,000, FY24 target is 8,000. Is that cumulative to be 21,000? Or is it just individually for FY24, we're only targeting 8,600 people?
So I'm going to yield to Karen Jordan to try to answer, what was the strategy there or why they did reduce that target number to 8,600?
Thank you, sir. And we can't hear you, ma'am. No, we can't hear you. Here you go, ma'am. Oh, there you go.
Good morning, everyone.
Now we're cooking with hot grease.
Good morning. I'm going to have to ask to come back with that answer for you, to be sure. But I do believe that the 8,655 was a number that Leslie was comfortable coming back from COVID, and as well as the John Booth Senior Center is not, is under construction, is being repaired. So the seniors have to travel to a different facility right now. So she's, you know, put that, I mean, decided that number because of that. But I'll come back with you with a specific strategy.
Okay. Mr. Chair, or whoever is the chair.
Just want to hop in really quick, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
As we were looking at our targets, we really worked with our colleagues in BBMR to make sure we were reaching for things that were realistic. So we know that we saw a huge decline in our seniors coming back into our spaces post-COVID. So I think the adjustment of the target is more realistic, what we believe that we are going to realize. So while we want to have stretch goals, we also want to make sure that goals that are really achievable, that we can continue to grow with.
Okay, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that response, and I understand, you know, have... having manageable targets. But FY twenty four is two years post-COVID. I would assume that, I would assume that deference, I would assume that difference within the FY twenty four target as opposed to the, I mean, I'm sorry, the FY twenty three target as opposed to the FY twenty four target, given that we're two years post-COVID. Thank you. And do you have a date when you'll be able to get that strategy to me or to the council, ma'am?
Sure, I can get it to you when we submit all the other, by Tuesday.
All right, it don't have to be by Tuesday. It can, let's give it, because I want a really robust strategy. And so let's do it by the end of the month. And then from there, we can see how we can coordinate with the new Office of Aging to see how we can address some of those issues.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
I can go now? I was next. I've been waiting patiently. I love y'all, though. I just have, first, I have a committee request for an additional meeting about Eastwood Park with the public and everyone in later July, early August, so that we can have that on the books. My next question, which is going to be related to your Capitol Office and support. One, I know we've had, and let me first say this. Thank you for your support in terms of getting support for our young people, Lillian Jones. And I recognize that it is one of the most heartfelt things that I've had to deal with since being in office when, so when a young lady was murdered in front of one of our rec centers. What I need from the agency now, and I thank you for the outreach that we're doing now to help bring back the programming. I need to have an assessment of what programming we can do in the actual community now that keeps the young people engaged, because we're losing them to other programs and losing them to violence, right? I just want to make sure that we have that. So I would like a plan by the end of July in terms of where we're going to go into, how to support them going into the school year. Now I'm going to switch to one of my rec centers that's soon to be built. I know about our issues with Parkview and the delay in terms of the demolition. And I'm going to reiterate this, and this is going to be an additional request. I want my young people reimbursed for the eighteen months of services that they had to lose out on in that building, because it was delayed. I just want to say that. This isn't an ask, a request. This is what is owed to the young people who now have to go to Dorothy I. Height for programming, and it's not consistently every day. So I want by the end of July, additional programming that you will offer those young people, because adults delay the demolition of this building. I know it's not your issue as well, but the same request is going to be offered to the Department of Housing and Community Development, because they're going to help you to pay for it, because that is what's owed to my young people. That delays came from their side of it. It wasn't always solely your fault. So I just want to make sure that this isn't a request. This is more sort of what is owed to my young people. So Commissioner Kennedy will get the same request on Monday, that a plan be put together about funding identified for those young people by the end of July, what supporting and programming that we can do with them. What I wanted to address is assistance and capacity. I want to know the true capacity of your Capitol Office with the projects, and what support the council can offer to help you with moving these along with their additional staffing. So I saw that the service numbers mainly remain the same. You guys have gone from an agency that was doing one rec center every couple of years to several years. So I just want to know how realistically we can support you in addressing all the capital needs for the entire city.
Good morning. Happy to address that. I think you alluded to our progress as an office. Six, seven years ago, before Director Moore's arrival and my promotion to chief, we were building roughly five or six projects a year in the, you know, ten million dollar range. We currently have over sixteen projects under construction at nearly seventy million dollars. So we are moving in that time with support. I have increased my full-time staff from sixteen personnel up to thirty-seven now. Some of that is from ARPA funding. Getting quality talent to join us at the pay we're offering and then retain them has been a recent challenge. We've lost three project managers this calendar year. We are working closely with partners in the local schools, in the local chapter of the Maryland ASLA, the Landscape Architecture Society, trying to get people involved. I just had a young lady start with us that interned last year from Morgan State University. So we are trying to be creative in how we get people. But to your point, capital seems to be flowing through a fire hydrant right now. Expectations are high. I have good people. We have good intentions. We have a plan. But I, at the current level, I'm not sure that I'm able to meet the expectations that are set upon us by the council and our residents. We have facilities that have not seen major investments since the sixties and seventies, and frankly, it's all kind of coming to a head now. They either need to be vacated or knocked down and rebuilt. So we are at a critical moment right now. I think you've seen what we're capable of doing when we're giving the time and the funding. But I don't think we can ever have enough personnel to help make that happen.
Councilman, if I can just jump in, and one of the things, though, as we, as Adam was saying, is that we are, we have three project management vacancies now that we're posting and actively recruiting. But we're also partnering with Morgan State. Morgan State has a phenomenal engineering and architect program. So we have an intern, the internship intern that he's speaking now that worked for us last summer now has just been hired to come on. So beyond just trying to depend on the workforce, we want to reach out to our college community as well and get them to help support us in internship opportunities. So we are continuously building up, as he stated, he has continued to grow. And I do understand that everybody wants their expectations of their projects to move as quick as possible. And we're going to continue to focus on how we can advance these projects and figure out other ways that we can get additional support through internships and other opportunities to continue to push these projects forward.
Have we looked at any sole source project management firms to help us with moving these projects? Because if, in the interim, if we have three positions that are vacant, if we could shift that to some type of contractor until we fill them, I think that would be the shift, because city schools had to do the same thing when they had to build the twenty-six new school buildings that they did in ten years? Twenty-six new schools and renovated buildings?
So councilman, let's let him answer a question directly, please. Sole Source, have we looked at it?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So two parts of that. Yes, we have looked at sole source opportunities for, both specifically, we're working with the Mayor's Office Infrastructure, MOID, at ways to be more nimble. We're using joint purchasing agreements to quickly procure different things. We're looking at the opportunity to resurrect the city's design-build option. And then we're also working with partners. We mentioned Kaboom earlier. Director Moore has also kind of renewed our relationship with Parks and People Foundation. So working with them, they've helped us to build some things as well. But yeah, we're trying to be as creative as possible and just keep things moving.
So my next question is going to be.
Well, we're doing, we're doing one. Councilman Burnett, I appreciate the effort, though.
Wait, oh, Councilman Burnett, I'm sorry. Councilman Conway hasn't gone yet. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very direct with my question. We talked about some of the maintenance issues. I'm really curious what the backlog is for tree maintenance and tree removal right now.
Hi. Stumps aside, because we all know that that's a separate issue. Tree maintenance and tree removal, we're sitting at about an eleven-month wait time.
That's good to know. Thank you. And I know, related to that, one of the issues in going through the book was that our estimated, our target for close on time is thirty-seven percent. Why is that so low? Is there any reason? So one, we're not, we're way behind. And then we also have a very low expectation. What's going on there? Why is it thirty-seven percent? Is there any reason why we're shooting so low?
I'm sorry, what is the thirty-seven percent you're referencing?
In the budget book on page, give me one moment. Page one, three forty-seven, for the performance measures for urban forestry, the target for the percentage of maintenance SRS closed on time is thirty-seven percent. Our actual in twenty twenty-two is thirty-six percent. In reality, we never even meet that thirty-seven percent. And not to, you know, I realize we have staff shortages, equipment issues, so on and so forth. It just really perplexes me that we're even shooting so low. Just kind of curious what the logic is there.
So just being honest, it's everything that you just said. Like, I came in, it was thirty-seven percent, and we aren't meeting that. So in establishing this goal, I said, okay, well, let's at least get to the goal we've been saying. You know, let's shoot for that and then work on improving from there. But I think the getting there is kind of threefold. One, you know, we had a very hard time this past year with transition to workday. Got to the point where our contractors shut down because they weren't getting paid. Thankfully, we solved that. And so they're back at work. But then you, we also have a hard time with service requests, because we can't control what comes in. We can mitigate that through our proactive program. We found a forty percent decrease in incoming service requests in areas that we have just gone through and done proactive work. But that proactive, the funding for that proactive work comes from the same pool as our SR work. So the more of that we do, yes, less service request comes in, but it also takes us longer to do, or I guess we do less of the ones that we have. So there's a balancing act there. And I think at the end of the day, if we want to see major improvements of that, because we do ninety percent of our work with contractors, it's going to either be or both an increase in funding or a shift to an in-house staff.
Yeah, I think, I would like for us to look at what those targets are and just recalibrate based on what is reasonable, given your resources, what is reasonable, given timelines, to expect for someone to pick up a downed tree or otherwise. I think it's just, it's important that we are very transparent with constituents about what the capability of our forestry division is. And I'll be honest, I don't really think it's fair to you that we're even expecting some of this stuff when you don't have the pieces that you need. So I would, I would love for the next rendition of the budget, if we take a look at that and maybe take a look at our SRS and really recalibrate based on what the capacity is. Just last point on this, one of the things I know we do, and this is on closed means closed, is when SRS come into forestry, they have an inspection, and then the SR is closed out. And then we ship it off to, to a contractor, and that could take months, years in some instances. This is a whole closed means closed issue, but I think it further sets this false expectation for problem resolution and really frustrates a lot of people. And I would love if we could relook at that process and improve that process.
So just a point of clarity on that, and I can't speak to the organization as a whole, but in forestry, we're involved with the closed means closed project. And our service requests are not closed out until the issues are resolved, with the exception of duplicates. Duplicates do get closed out automatically, and I know that that messaging is very poor for our end users, in my opinion. And I think the closed means closed group would agree with that. And so they're, we're working on getting that information related, so we can have that service request in Salesforce closed, because it's a duplicate, but then link it to the open one, right? So they know what's going on.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Baltimore City is in the first year of its new MS four permit. And I know this is sort of in the DPW world. And so, but one of the, the reason I'm bringing this up here is that the feedback that I've consistently gotten and seen, obviously, with the number of these projects in my district, is that the DPW has been unwilling to follow industry best practices for design, constructing, monitoring, and minimizing the negative environmental and community impacts of these projects. I know that you all have been pushing back on this. And this is something I did intend to raise in both the CAO hearing, as well as the DPW hearing, but I dropped the ball and put it on my spreadsheet. But how can we better support your efforts, your agency's efforts, to meet the, obviously, needs that we have to have at, by the consent decree, while also making sure that we're not engaging in unnecessary and harmful damage, permanent damage to our green spaces by chasing down MS four credits while not necessarily looking at the bigger picture of what the impact of these projects can have, most of which are temporary? And we've seen failures of these projects in areas like Lock Raven and other parks, where within less than a decade, we're back. And so how can we better support you all in that effort to preserve our green spaces?
So Councilman Burnett, that's a great question. And I'm going to start, and I'm going to let the Chief of Staff, who's been working closely with Audrey, who's the Chief of Staff for DPW. I think one of the things that we've, me and Director Mitchell has asked our team is we need to do a reset. We need to look at these projects that are pending and figure out what projects are urgent. Is the strategy make, does the strategy make sense? When the last time we've been back out to the communities? And let's have a conversation with the communities. So our team is working with DPW to look at some projects that we can say, yes, we feel comfortable with, but then projects that we don't. Is there an opportunity to redesign? Or do we need to go back and visit this with the community so we can communicate and educate with the community the realities of, here's what we have to do, and here's the impact? Or is there alternatives? So I think we, and we have worked closely with the administration on this. And me and Jason met recently with our Chief of Staff, and they kind of shared this strategy. And so I think it was us having a reset between our staff that's actually in the fields working together and leadership buying into and saying, hey, this is the direction we're going to go. We're going to work together to find the most effective way that does not impact the environment in such a negative way. Because one of my positions has been, one of our pillars is conservation. And how can we be about conservation if we're allowing people to remove trees? So I can let my Chief of Staff really add a little bit more, but we are working closely with DPW on that topic.
Yep, so I think the first thing is I want to commend both our forestry team and DPW's team, because they are a passionate bunch of people. So we have been involved in some very intense conversations and dialogues about how we balance the needs of conservation with the needs to advance our work on the consent decree and getting those MS four credits. So at the place that we are now, we want to resocialize with the community the options that we have before us, and then present to the administration some options for consideration. I think Director Moore alluded to it, but it required a re-engagement between our teams. Very passionate people. If you ever have free time, it's a very lively meeting. But just making sure that we value both of the work that the agencies are doing. I think under CAO, Leisha's leadership, too, the requirement that our teams work more strategically together. So we are one city, and we all have these shared interests. So I think that she's been doing an awesome job of driving the collaboration between the agencies. And my colleague, Chief of Staff Audrey at DPW, we've been making some advancements. So I feel much more comfortable in that space than I would have felt six months ago. So soon we should be having some community meetings to resocialize some of the current active projects that we are at a place of contention and hope that we'll have a resolve for the administration to consider very shortly.
Would love to be a part of the conversations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Adam, quick informational request, doesn't need to be answered now. Renovations of Upton Boxing Center are a priority for Senator Hayes and myself. Would you be able to put together a plan by Tuesday, kind of outlining what the costs would be and the timeframe would be for developing a plan for renovations? So all I would need by Tuesday is, how much is it going to cost? And how long is it going to take in order to put together a plan? Is that something you can do?
Yeah, we can certainly do it. And we focus on design and then.
And we focus on design and then allow that to then speak to what the construction costs would be.
Yeah. And I don't necessarily even need construction costs. I just need a dollar figure for putting together a plan and how quickly you can get me that plan. Okay, so by Call of Business Tuesday, it's Upton Boxing Center. Thank you. Councilman, I know I told you I was gonna go to you next, but I haven't asked a question yet, and I've been waiting for MOHS Director Irene Augustine, who graciously left a conference to come join us. So I want to make the most of her time and get to my quick question. And then I'm going to Councilman Schleifer next. And I think this is gonna involve Director Augustine, CAO Leach, and Director Moore. Over the past couple of weeks, we have had permitted events at the Riverside Park gazebo in which a constituent has applied for a permit, and the permit has been approved by BCRP, and they have paid BCRP for that permit. So it's totally valid permit to do like a birthday party or a graduation party. When they have arrived at the gazebo, a day or two in advance to plan it out, there is a homeless encampment set up within the gazebo. What is the plan for how we address this in the future moving forward? CAO Leach, I'll turn it over to you and the administration as to who wants to go first. Thank you.
I like the coat.
Thank you. I know, it's the old logo. So I'll talk very broadly about the strategy, and then we can talk specifically about what has occurred at Riverside Park. And then I'll turn it over to Director Augustine and then, as well as Director Moore, to go into a bit more details. So as far as our strategy as it relates to homeless encampments, which we'll get into in more detail at the MOHS hearing, and encampments in public spaces, we have, we coordinate across agencies around engagement of those homeless encampments. So our response is one that is paired with, there's an enforcement component of the response, but that, but the enforcement component of the response is not the initial response. The initial response is going to be our outreach and engagement team. Director Augustine will go through kind of our outreach and engagement strategy. She'll talk a little bit about her team. But generally, what we do is we track all of the encampments that we are aware of in the city, and we send outreach workers out to those encampments to engage with those individuals and to try to connect them with shelter and/or housing. And so as it relates to our parks, we do the same thing. We track those encampments. I think everyone is familiar with the encampment in Druid Hill Park and the progress that we were able to make there. And, you know, we have the same strategy as it relates to all of our public spaces and our parks facilities. So our outreach team goes out first, they attempt to do engagement, and then we follow up, if necessary, with BPD. And outreach is usually ahead of BPD because we want to offer those services and support before we have to do any level of enforcement. Irene can talk a little bit more about the partnerships that we have around behavioral health, even when we do that BPD deployment. So I'll turn it over to the directors.
Before Irene goes, I appreciate the offer for that background. Appreciate all the work you guys are doing. Intimately familiar with that because I have about half of the population of the city that is experiencing homeless at any given time in my district. So appreciate all those partnerships. Let me clarify exactly what I'm looking for. I'm looking for an assurance from the administration that when there is an encampment within a specific place within a park that has been rented out for use by residents, that those individuals will be moved in a humane way and that the area will be cleaned up and prepared for residents who have applied for and paid to use a specific space in the park.
Yes. So as it relates to Riverside, and maybe there have been some other incidents since we last engaged on this.
You were great. You got the problem fixed. I'm looking for an assurance from a policy perspective that when that happens and a constituent reaches out, I can say, Mr. Jones, the area will be prepared for you and clean and ready for you and your family to enjoy the space that you've applied for and paid for and has been approved by Rec Parks.
So what we can do is submit to you a protocol for how we will manage our rented facilities where there may be homeless encampments.
Sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Yes. So the protocol will be, so what we will submit to you is this protocol of how we will engage and how we will move forward with ensuring that the space is ready for permitted events.
Perfect. So just to state my understanding so that I'm clear and that I'm understanding you the correct way. If a constituent reserves a space at a park, and they've applied for it and paid for it, and there is a homeless encampment there prior to the event, the event will be cleared out in a humane way, and it will be clean so that that constituent can use that specific space that they've rented?
So, and I see you just see it, so my vision for what we will submit to you is a protocol by which we are going around to all of our rented facilities in the city ahead of any permitted event to, one, determine if there are active encampments or individuals experiencing homelessness there. We will then activate that protocol if there are, and we will try to build out three days, five days, two weeks in advance. But again, I want to make sure that I'm coordinating with the team to build out the proper protocol. But to answer your question, yes, the goal would be to ensure that if there are encampments in permitted places, that we have built in enough time to engage those individuals and dismantle that encampment ahead of an event.
Totally understood. Appreciate it. That's the answer I'm looking for. I want to, Director Augustine here, and Director Moore, you and your senior team, that in the future, if I reach out and raise this issue to your attention, I am not going to get the response that the city's policy is that we do not remove encampments, and I am not going to get the, from MOHS, and I am not going to receive the response from BCRP that there is nothing we can do about it. Because I just heard the boss say that you all are gonna work collaboratively together to ensure that that place is clean for the resident who's rented it, and that on the backend through Irene and her team and all those partnerships that you've helped set up along the way, Faith, that those individuals will be relocated in a very humane manner. And that's what I'm hearing. And I have a commit, Irene, do I have a commitment from you? And Director Moore, do I have a commitment from you that that'll be the response that I receive in the future if this is raised again? Just a simple yes or no? Yes?
Yes.
Perfect. Director Moore?
Yes, yes, Chair.
That's all I need. Thank you. CAO Leach, thank you. Yep, please.
If I may clarify one point. I know that relocation is really the goal. However, all, in terms of MOHS, we're offering services to them. Again, they're voluntary services. And so that's why our partnerships with Parks and Recs BPD is important. But I just want to make sure that, when you say humanely relocate, that we're offering services to them. You know, we're gonna work to make sure that we're clearing out the area, but that, that services are voluntary.
Yeah. Let me restate it one last time and get confirmation from all parties. I'll eliminate 86 relocate from my lexicon. I know that everything that you and your office do because of Faith and her team's leadership is humane, that the area that has been applied for and rented and approved will be cleared out and will be clean for use by residents. That's what I'm, that's a yes?
Yes.
That's a yes?
This is just, but Chairman, can I just highlight one piece? Is that we will work and definitely work with the administration to develop this protocol. And we just gotta make sure that all parties are engaged. Because what we can't do is remove a person. What we can do is we can clean the space, we can preserve their homeless.
Let me cut you off respectfully. I understand what your limitations are. That's why I specifically asked for Director Augustine to be here and for CAO Leach to chime in. I know what you can do on your own. You can clean a space, you can make sure the electric's hooked up. I got that. So we're good. I'm 100% good. CAO Leach?
The last thing that I'll offer is, while, again, these are park spaces and individuals experiencing homelessness, the enforcement is also, the enforcement requires a police presence in BPD, which is, of course, governed by a consent decree, which, of course, within that consent decree has limitations on individuals experiencing homelessness, which is why we lean very heavily on our behavioral health partners. But what you will get from me is very much like we did with Riverside, is that we will identify all of those spaces where we have permitted events. We will proactively go out and determine if there are encampments there. And we will start that process Monday of engaging with those individuals and letting them know that they cannot be in areas where there are permitted events. So that's why I talked about this protocol.
Perfect, and that's very helpful to understand. I just want to know that I can tell a constituent when they reach out, the space will be ready, it will be clear, and it will be clean for you. And having your, what you've said has put me at ease. I can now say that confidently, and I don't have to check in with an agency official to say, can I tell them this? Will it be? Because I know it will be. So I can say, I'm on it, and I'll get them connected with the major from the Police District, and I'll get them connected with MOHS and Rec and Parks, so everyone's looped in. And then I'm confident you all can work together and get it resolved. Thank you so much, CAO Leach. Director Augustine, thank you for coming down. I appreciate it. Councilman Schleifer?
Before I get to my question, just three clarifying things from the last round.
Please be brief in the clarification.
Director, you said that there's no rec centers in the 3rd District. According to your map online, there are three: Woodhome, North Harford, and Northwood. And I posted that map online so you can see as well.
All right, we're gonna pause there. If there's a direct disagreement that you can characterize in one sentence, please provide it. Otherwise, we'll move to the second point of clarification.
Northwood, North Harford's closed. There are evidently two others that's in that district.
Thank you, Director. Councilman?
So they only got two?
Councilman, second point.
Next up, you had said you guys were talking about the skate park and saying that it was not in the budget, et cetera. But we have printouts here that say that this was actually in the capital budget for '22, and majority of the money for the skate park is actually coming from the city, not the state. So can you just clarify that?
What we're gonna do, we're gonna pause on that. I'm gonna give these documents to Chief Boorman from the Capital Division to review. And before, I got it. And before the end of the, no, he doesn't have to get up. I got it. Before the end of the question, we will come back to this. Councilman?
And the other thing was, you said you don't have an equity coordinator. Has Rec and Parks ever had an equity coordinator?
Councilman Schleifer, what I have is my deputy director of administration is serving in that capacity on a part-time basis, and what we need is a full-time committed person to look at equity. So yes, we do have someone that's serving in that capacity, but she's doing multiple jobs. But in this budget, we will have an independent individual that will focus just on equity.
So pause. So you've got budget authorization in the fiscal '24 to have that full-time? And you have plans underway to recruit for that? Got it. Thank you. Councilman, your question.
Okay, so I don't know why, when I asked who the equity coordinator was from Rec and Parks, I was told that there wasn't and that it's in the budget.
So we're not gonna focus on that? We got a direct answer to the question. Councilman, your question.
Well, then I can go back to my original questions and ask the questions I want to ask to the equity coordinator, and then I'll get into my question for this round.
Well, do you have, who's the equity coordinator? Is that person here?
Yes.
Ma'am, what's your name? Oh, Ms. Green. Oh, very nice to see you. Nice to put the face with the email address. Councilman, your question.
Yeah, so Ms. Green, from the work that you've been doing as the agency's equity coordinator, have you looked across the board at the concerns that I've raised in previous years about the inequities in Rec across the city? And do you agree that my district does not have an equitable access to recreational opportunities that the rest of the city has afforded?
So, Councilman, I have not personally looked at your district, but I do know that in our, as we are working on a comprehensive plan, that all of these things will be addressed during that time.
Okay. My question for this round, are you guys removing every tree stump after a tree is taken down or removed?
Yes, we are. Our process is, when our QA inspector goes out for, to quality check the tree removal, they are making a stump removal work order.
Thank you for that. And you and I discussed that your predecessor had decided to single-handedly change the agreement that the mayor and city council had with Rec and Parks in, within that process of removing a tree stump after any tree has been taken down or fallen down. And so where are you on removing all of those tree stumps that were supposed to have been removed under the agreement between the mayor and city council?
For those particular stumps, I would need a list of them and to do an edit. And you go through those stump by stump. But I can say, in general, it's been a long road to get here. As you well know, we didn't have a contract for a very long time. And it was just October of last year that our contractor got the signed contract to begin work with one crew. We got a second one early this year. And then last, beginning of last month, we got crews three and four. And those are key because with two stump crews, we're only keeping up with the stumps we're generating. So we're finally making progress to clean up the, all of the stumps within the city that we know of. We currently have a little over 2,100 stump work orders.
Okay, and so I think that actually... Is it a request? The chair asked me to chair. No, I'm having a dialogue on this. I don't have a request yet. I want to just get some more clarity. Well, if you could keep it succinct so we can get to the other folks that are also waiting for questions. So with the strongest list of inventory that we have really across any board really is in your department, you guys have a very good inventory list of the trees, the stumps, and those assets. So with those stumps that are outstanding, ones that have been outstanding for years, when do you anticipate them all being removed by?
So with our current course of action, we, our goal is to get to the point where every stump is removed within three, or 30 days of the tree removal. That it will take us, you know, roughly three years.
It'll take you three years from now to get rid of the old ones?
No, I'm saying to get to a state where we're removing them within 30 days, it will take us three years.
So my question is, all the outstanding ones from previous years, not the new ones, the outstanding ones from previous years, how long will it take to remove all of those?
I would have to get back to you on that. Our current process is we are working the oldest stump and the ones around it. We haven't forecasted that entire timeline at this point because we're getting data in still on stump grinding crews three and four to make an accurate prediction.
Thank you. So that is my request, Mr. Acting Chairman, that they provide the list of outstanding stumps from previous years and a timeline in which they anticipate all of those stumps being removed. Thank you. Okay, so the list, do you guys have that? Previous years? Tiffany in the back? You got it? Okay. Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, and I think the mayor's office, I had sent, there was an announcement recently about a map of all of the ARPA investments relative to Rec and Parks. And there were two of my parks missing from that list. And I just wanted to follow up to just make sure that what I had been given last year is consistent with that map, because right now it's not consistent. It's the Clifton, actually, we knew about what's happening with Clifton. And then it's also the Adams Park, I believe. So we'll back up, we'll check in on that. But again, the map is inconsistent with the list that I got last year. So I just want to make sure that my parks are still on the list.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. I've spoken to our capital team and what we can provide, and we have spoken to the mayor's office and Moger. So if we can provide you a detailed response of what's happening to those two parks, and some of that may be that maybe that funding is not ours, it's gonna be funded from somewhere else. But I can get you that detailed information no later than close business Monday, on where those two parks are and how they're gonna be funded or what's gonna happen.
So you're saying that the list that I got from last year of ARPA investments in my parks is likely, could potentially be different than what is on the map because you've moved money around?
No, what I'm saying, Councilwoman, is that it's not the No, what I'm saying, Councilwoman, is that it's not that we've moved money around, but as we continue to see the increase in construction costs and playground installations, we've had to make some decisions on some of our projects. And where we may have been in one position going until last year when you received this list from our office, there has, we had to make some modifications. And I think what we're saying to you is our commitment is to address it, but it may not be addressed with ARPA funding. And what I want to do is to get that to your writing of what is the strategy around it.
And is that something that has been happening citywide, where we got a list last year, and then there's been some modifications? So it may end up being something you need to provide for all of the districts?
From my understanding, you was one of few districts that have received that list. And because we were still trying to address the accuracy of our list, and so unfortunately, you did receive that information, and we're going to address that. But because of the increase in construction costs, we've had to adjust some of our projects off the list. But currently, from my legislative team, your district was the only one that received that list from last year.
Right, because I asked for it, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, so it's just you.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a basketball resurfacing, actually, in one of them. And then, but my playgrounds, I'm excited about. So I just want to make sure that I'm still getting what I'm supposed to be getting in there, especially since I've already said it to so many people. So I want to make sure that that's actually going to be accurate.
I can assure you, we'll get your response to that.
Okay, thanks so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, one of the big issues that we've been having in my district has been around unpermitted gatherings. I'm sure other districts have had the same issue. We've been working with Northern District BPD in order to begin to address the issue. We brought our Wreckin Parks, otherwise, so on and so forth. I'm really curious if we have a strategy for managing this across the city. We kind of took a couple of licks before we finally had something to address, and we are seeing some success. I'm curious what the plan is across the city when we have unpermitted gatherings that turn to 200, 300-plus people.
Councilwoman Conway, that's a great question. And yes, the unpermitted events, I think the CIO spoke about this earlier, the collaboration on the citywide group that meets on Wednesdays. And what we try to do is we look at social media outlets, we look at social media channels to see if we can see and identify any of those unpermitted events. If we, in our meetings, identify those unpermitted events, as the CIO stated, is that we have a team that normally reaches out and tries to communicate with its organizers, because what we want people to do is to do it the right way, as she stated earlier, right? If you want to do an event, permit it the proper way, and there's protocols, there's things that you have to do in place. But unfortunately, there are some times where even our young people are getting smart too, and they'll, we won't find out about things until it happens. And what we try to do is to work with our sister agency, BPD, to address if we see it happens and we do not know about it. But we are really aggressively working weekly with DPW, DOT, BPD, our agency, to try to head these events off before they happen. But I do understand it is a challenge.
Yeah, and I think the other major consideration here is the cleanup after the events. And this has happened a number of times in my district, where then the community has to go out there and pick up trash, and who knows whatever else. So have we also thought about that component and how we maintain the parks after some of these illegal events happen?
Yes, so each of our park districts, part of their daily QA QC is to go to the parks and see where there needs to be additional support for trash collection. And in the partnership I alluded to earlier with Muncie, with our returning citizens, they also assist us in cleaning up the parks. So particularly over the spring/summer season where our parks are heavily used, Ed and his team are, we do more rounds around the park to address, particularly after long weekends. And we've worked with our permiters who have permits to bag the trash and have them in a space where we can come and collect them in an easier manner. So if you do encounter any difficulties in those parks, you should contact us, so we can make sure our team is deployed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In spring of 2024, you guys get back a big treasure of the 7th District, Druid Hill Park. It will be fully restored. Here's my next question, my vision plan. We've received 2/3 of the funding, I believe we're at $34 million of the $50 million that you need. Am I correct, Director?
No, sir, we're actually at $17 million. We thought we received the 17 this year, but it was a correction from last year's allocation. So we're at 1/3 of our allocation. But the Senator is committed to really exploring that option in this upcoming session.
Okay. So idealistically, with the fact that we only have 1/3, when will we be able to achieve the entire vision plan? Because it is, not to grandstand for a moment, it is the second-largest municipal park in the country, and it's surrounded by historically black neighborhoods who will drastically see home values go up. And I just want to make sure that like we're tiring this in as I'm having housing look into ways that we can stabilize the property taxes for our historically black residents in those areas, so that they are not displaced because of this investment. The longer that we wait, in terms of like the projection of the investment, is harmful to them, because I have homes that are facing the park right now that were $400,000. I have a projected home value in Reservoir Hill that would be between $600,000 and $800,000 once you complete Phase 1 of this project, right? I have to figure out how to keep those neighborhoods affordable and looking like me, because they are residents who have waited so long for this treasure to be built. So I just want to make sure, what is a realistic timeline in terms of funding for the projects?
So this is a great question, and I'm really excited about this Druid Hill project. I think it's going to be a game-changing opportunity for the citizens of Baltimore. I will tell you that our consultants are getting ready to start Phase, I've asked them to work through Phase 2, with the intention that we're going to raise the additional revenue, hopefully, with the support of the Senator. And so they're in the process of gearing up to do that now. I will yield to Adam to kind of tell you what's that timeline for that Phase 1 and 2. And then, you know, there's a third piece that we're working with our sister agency at DOT is also looking at a study, because I think the investment in the park is going to be one opportunity, but if you want to connect those communities, we've got to figure out a way that we can connect those communities. And how do we improve on the amount of pavement that separates the park from those communities? So I know we're working also with our sister agency. But Adam can give you the timeline of what we're looking at.
Yeah, before he does that, I just want to make sure the public understands that we do have currently in the CIP 30% plus the environmental study through DOT for Druid Park Lake Drive. So that's why I'm asking you, because we're going to get a new roadway in the next five years that's going to connect all my historically black communities back to the park. The question is, and I hate to say this, because we've had construction since 2018, and road closures, and...
Mr. Councilperson, can we tighten it up?
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure that we have a realistic timeline, because all these things have to work together and not have that many disruptions.
I'll be quick on that. First of all, I always appreciate your advocacy here. I think you see, we see the opportunities. We must recognize the scale of this financially. Locally, the city CIP just cannot support this and maintain all the other stuff we've got to do. So the state has been great. I'm hoping that we can work with DOT on their federal application for Druid Lake Park Drive. I think there's opportunities to get some funding there. But it is, it is hard to say what that timeline is now. I think we can parse it out in phases, and we have kind of started to lay that out. But I am like you, I'd like to see this done in the next five years as the next 20. So I'd like to offer the opportunity to engage with your office and our consultants and kind of put our heads together in the coming month.
That'd be perfect, especially if we're gearing up for the administration, for the next General Assembly. Maybe we should ask for both Phase 2 and 3. I'm just being transparent, because DOT is meeting the timelines in terms of getting us their new roadway. In terms of the park, I, and I'm just frankly with other councilmembers, I want to keep Afrim and our park, and I see that it is an ideal location to have 150,000 people at the front of the park with the beautiful background of our reservoir behind them. I can imagine Joe Scott sitting there, just in case you want to get her for next year. But I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure that cohesively like...
Have the question in.
What I want to do is have a briefing with Wreckin Parks, DOT, as well as DPW, because Oscar Renda will be turning the park back over to you in the spring of 2024. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. And in addition to that, also the same timeline for Hanlon Park as well. So that would be another request. And then in addition to that, as a request, the community has requested that we rename Hanlon Park Victorine Adams Park, and I'm looking forward to engaging your office about renaming that park after Councilwoman Victorine Adams.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer?
All right, Adam, now that you've had a chance to review the documents, can you please explain the previous comments that it was not included in the city's budget? It wasn't earmarked for the skate park despite those documents from our budget saying it does?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. So in FY '20, we did request design funding for the skate park. We then engaged a consultant. We have done 95% of the skate park design. Through that process, we engaged with the youth, we engaged with Skate Park of Baltimore. We had an extensive design process to look at that skate park and the new basketball court that was proposed. Then in 2022, we went to the CIP to get funding for the construction of that. As you stated, it included both local funds and state funds. It gets approved locally in the CIP, and that's what we're seeing here. But then after the fact, we have to put in our application to the state. That is when it was denied by the state and asked that it be resubmitted with a different scope of work. So that is what we have done to date, and that's how we have kind of shifted the focus on these other improvements to the park. I would say, as an agency, when the Senator and councilmen are ready to revisit the skate park, we would love to do that. But right now, we realize there are other priorities in the park before we do that project.
Okay, and how much did you spend on developing that plan? You said that you're at 95%?
Yep, the skate park plan was $25,000.
And is that plan unique to that location, or is that a plan, a design, that could be used in a different location of similar size?
Hypothetically, it could move around, but it was site-specific. It was working with the youth of that neighborhood and other stakeholders.
Okay, my last thing on that is, what is the total cost to construct what you designed?
The skate park?
Yeah.
Is estimated between $800,000 and $900,000.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question, and then I'll go to Ramos. Would you circle back around on this, a direct follow-up?
I just want to make sure for the public's consumption that the original cost of the park was $600,000, and that the cost, correct, Adam, was originally costed at $600,000. But when we approached companies, it went up to close to $900,000 to build just the skate park alone, and with no additional improvements to the park for the community. In engagement, I just want to make sure Wreckin Parks specify this, in engagement with the community, the, how can I say this? The feedback from the actual residents in the community was what, Director, in terms of the prioritization of the funds for the skate park versus park improvements? I just want to make sure that's clear for the public.
Yeah, I think it was mixed. I think we got direct feedback that there are issues in the park that need to be fixed, first and foremost. I think that is something that you'll hear from us citywide, is that we need to kind of take care of what we got sometimes before we imagine something new. As sexy as that can be, sometimes we have to fix what we've got. So there was a temporary, what do we call that thing? The loop?
Pump track.
The pump track out there that seemed to be positive and seemed to be well-received. So we do understand there is a desire there, both internally and from external residents of the neighborhood. But again, I think the thing that we heard clearest from the local residents is that fix our park, and then we can address the skate park.
Okay, thank you. The, it's a two-part question. One, I couldn't figure out where, oh, let me start from the beginning. The Curry Mary Nature Center Forest School is a unique education center that focuses on environmental education for youth. The center currently has a leaking roof, and more importantly, is understaffed. And so there's, I've spoken to parents who have raised concerns about the hours of operation being sort of not in alignment with traditional work schedules. I think like the day ends at 4:00 PM, most jobs, not all usually get off around 5:00. And the concerns that were raised at taxpayer night BOE, which I think some of them came, were about converting a few of those positions to full-time positions to extend the hours out. Is that something that the agency can accommodate?
So, Councilmember, I'm going to yield to Director Willen, but I believe the PO has been issued for the roof. Is that correct? I'm going to start it first.
Thank you, Director Moore. Yes, the PO has been issued.
So that roof should be getting repaired. The second piece...
Is there like a general, I know timelines can be tricky, is there like a window that I can convey to constituents that are concerned about that?
I can get you, the PO's been issued, so what I'll do is I'll get Ed to contact the contractor to figure out where it is and its schedule, and we can physically send it over to you, so you'll know exactly when that work is to start. The second piece is that, and we have been in conversation with the administration, while Curry Mary is a unique opportunity for us to continue to grow in that daycare program, one of the areas of concern for Curry Mary is that it is in service number 649. It is in the enterprise account. So what happens is, because of the enterprise account, and that enterprise account, you have revenue coming from Mount Pleasant and all the other revenue sources, and it is losing revenue at Mount Pleasant, and we're having to sustain that through other revenue source opportunities. What me and the administration's been looking at is also that while that's a unique program, we need to look at our costs and what we're charging parents for that program. We're really charging an extremely low price for that. So is there an opportunity that we can look at raising the fee? And then also, I know the CIO is looking at, is there opportunities that we can enhance that funding on top of what the revenue? So we are looking at it, we are looking at exploring it. And then two, the third piece of that is expanding the opportunities. So we are looking at it, and we do understand the value of it, but we want to make sure we get that building taken care of, and then while at the same time, looking at the current cost of the program.
Yeah, I'd like to be a part of those conversations, because I think striking a balance to ensure that from that equity lens is not too expensive, because there's already some diversity challenges with the children that are there and not necessarily being representative of the community. But I think, you know, we start to price out the community, we hit sort of a different problem, and so I'd like to be a part of that conversation. Councilman Torrance, you had a quick follow-up, and then I'll go, but he did really quick, because I know we have Conway as well.
It's a tough question. Have we followed up?
I just want to say, of course, as the councilman, I want to be tied into that conversation as well as one of my questions. Thank you.
I was going to say, have we approached city schools about potentially moving, because I know they're looking for locations for their pre-K3 programs, seeing if we can locate a pre-K3 program there and share revenue for it? That would provide a free opportunity and be more reflective of the community, but also add staffing.
We have not had that conversation, but sir, we can definitely explore that option.
Like what I'm hearing, let's keep talking. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you. I think it's been mentioned a couple of times about the park rangers, but I don't think any have been actually, or ambassadors, excuse me. What is the plan for hiring, since we had given the money in for last budget, and I don't, I don't think we have any hired quite yet?
Great question, Councilwoman Ramos. And actually, they are going to be park rangers. We've gone, we...
Great, yay, rangers.
So we're trying to do both, though. We're trying to have park rangers that's our full-time FTEs, but also have park ambassadors that may be unique to some of our larger parks. So we're trying to do both. But I'm going to yield to my HR chief, who can tell us where we are in that hiring process. I know we're interviewing some people, but she can kind of give you what's been the response and the reality of who's applying and where we are. So Chief Green?
For our park ranger series, we, when we received those positions, they had not been created, because they were positions that we received in the budget. So the process is, we have to create the positions. In creating those positions, the park ranger series did not exist for Baltimore City at all. So in partnership with DHR, we had to also create that career ladder. That has been done, interviews have been completed, we are making offers for the park ranger supervisor, and we're in the process of the interviews for park ranger 2 and park ranger 1. and we're in the process of the interviews for Park Ranger 2 and Park Ranger 1 as well. We're hoping to have them onboard before August 1.
That's five, correct?
Yes.
Uh huh.
Five positions.
Uh huh. And so this might be, this is a follow-up to that. So the Director Larson, so there's that. So the money is still sitting there for these positions and we're allocating an additional set of money for these positions for this fiscal year. How does that work? So it's not like we're adding another five, it's the same five, it's the same salary, but we still have that money from 2023.
So these positions are, were funded under the state Project Open Space.
Correct.
Funding that Wreckin Parks gets. So in how we budget positions, you know, we budget the annual cost in terms of salary and benefits for all of our positions. So because there was a lag with these positions, there'll be a surplus in fiscal '23. That surplus stays within that, within the overall state grant funds for Wreckin Parks. And so they'll, you know, that appropriation will be there for them to, to access. And then the positions are fully funded as well going into fiscal '24.
Well, yeah, program open space money is, is flexible money. So those, that could have been moved around and used anyway, right? So you're not using them for the same, that's money for the same positions. You've moved it elsewhere within Project Open Space.
I'm not aware if the department's reallocated any of those dollars in fiscal '23.
Or, or you just didn't use them so that same money is what you're using for '24? Because we're not hiring them until the fiscal '24.
So, so Councilwoman, that's a great question. So what we will do with that funding is at the end of the year, we'll know what money was not expended in '23. And what we try to do is take any excess funding and look at some one-time purchases. As the chief of staff spoke about earlier, one of our big goals is changing our equipment and our park maintenance. And we, we want to, we want to go green. And so that's going to be a little bigger of an expense. So what we may do is look at some of that and working with BBMR and reallocating that to purchase green equipment, moors, weediers, which is the direction that we should be moving in as, as a city. So that could be an option. It could, it's various things that we could do. But what we try to do with that money is to use it as a one-time purchase because the, the money for '24 will be allocated for those positions. So we don't want to commit any long-term commitment.
Right, right, yeah. Well, I have the same issue with the in-rem lawyers that I'm working and dealing with as well. So, okay, well, I'm, first of all, glad that they're going to be park rangers and would encourage that in line with our off-leash dog issue, that not only do we work with the sheriff, but also the rangers to get them citation enforcement powers. And that is a power that the police have to instill in them. And so that could be something to consider in your plan that you're going to give us utilizing the rangers and also the sheriff. But again, and I know there's only five, so you're going to have to share them. Like I think Stony Run is going to be shared with Druid Park or however that's going to work. But just as a way to think about how to, how to, how to work with them. But I'm super excited about the program. Thank you.
Okay, we have three minutes. Do you have something rapid fire, rapid question, rapid response?
Very rapid fire. Hopefully you guys can answer this in one sentence, well, two sentences maybe because there are a couple of follow-ups. One, what is the timeline for the pool installation at Walter P. Carter?
So the Walter P. Carter pool, I think it's going to be more than two sentences. But we're having to rebid that pool. It actually came in over budget. So it's, I just signed a notice to proceed and it just got passed through the BOE. So it's going back out for, for bidding now. And it's roughly a 90-day process. So we would be able to see in, in those, I'm sorry, not 90 days, six weeks, six weeks on the bid. We'll definitely keep your abreast of how that bid, that second bid comes in.
Got it. Tied to that, there was a, a request put in a while ago about lighting behind Walter P., where the pool would go. There, there was a shooting there a couple of months ago. Are you guys tied in at all with that?
So that's an interesting question that you, you have there. We worked with our sister agents to immediately go out the next day. They developed a strategy and a plan. And then I heard from Cindy Smith in schools that their team was looking at the possibility of lighting. So we're trying to work through, make sure that we're, we're not tripping over each other and working together. But we both are looking at how we can improve the lighting in that area.
And last, at Dewey's Park, we found a body in an alley abutting the park. And we've been really trying to get lighting there as well, very utilized park. Any sense on what it would take in order to get lighting at Dewey's?
I can't give you the answer now, but I can definitely get our team to go out and assess and, and work with our sister agency at DOT similar to what we did at Walter P. Carter. And I can get your response and let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Torrance, real quick.
So I, I agree with like timelines on some of the projects. I would just like a timeline on construction for a number of my ARPA ones. I'm just going to keep it simple. That's it. Did you get that timeline for ARPA projects? That timeline for construction for the ARPA projects that are announced?
All right, look at us, 11:59. Director, thank you to you and your team. I think this was a good session and we are in recess until 12:30 for the comptroller's office. Thank you all.